Start our recording. And our broadcast, we're just waiting for our attendees to populate the room.
So this is a continuation of the planning board meeting that we opened at six fifteen tonight. Oh, we've called roll and we're all will all be in attendance eventually coming from another from an executive session. And I want to go through the agenda first. Our one public hearing is the Caswell Restaurant Group, represented by me, Tom and Costa for seventeen twenty-one State Street, a DOD special permit. After that, we have general business. A minor modification request for thirteen Doyle Drive, which was is in the Colby Farm OSRD permitted area. We also have a discussion of proposed zoning for short term rental units on our agenda. And our last item will be approval of our minutes followed by any updates. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to attorney need for the public hearing at seventeen twenty-one State Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Lisa Mead, me, Talman Costa, thirty Green Street in Newburyport on behalf of Jeff and Nancy Caswell of the Caswell Restaurant Group for the property at seventeen to twenty-one State Street. Also with us this evening is Dan Ricarelli, who is the chief architect on the project. And if you could perhaps pull up the presentation, Andy or Caitlin, I'm not sure who's there tonight. Thank you. So you can go to the first slide, please. As the board is aware, at the last meeting, I think that we pretty much finished up the review of the banner sign of proposed changes. And the applicant agreed to a condition in any decision the board might issue related to the new brine sign being applied. And then the outstanding issues related to the proposed windows. Next slide, please. So there was some discussion at the last meeting about the energy code and construction. And I just wanted to go back a little bit because I think it's interesting. And we think it's important for this board to know, because the board actually never had this presented to them, that in two thousand and twenty-one, when we met with the zoning board to obtain a variance for operable windows, we actually proposed windows that met the energy code. And while the window patterns were consistent with windows in downtown Newburyport, it they did receive the design received a significant amount of negative feedback. They included muttons and other features that were different from the plate glass. If you could go to the next slide, please. So just for the board's information, this is what was proposed to the zoning board in two thousand and twenty-one. And you can see how these windows operated, but they certainly are not the plate glass windows that we're proposing tonight. But however, they did meet the energy code, which the board seemed to have a a knack for at the last meeting. But given the feedback, and if you could go to the next slide, please. Given the feedback that the applicant received and the architect received, the applicant spent a significant amount of time with the architect researching and trying to find windows that were operable, but at the same time were, you know, replicated the plate glass appearance of the windows that exist today. And ones that are historically appropriate. And so we they wanted them to appear to be plate glass, to have no muttons, to present the same opening that exists today, use the same framing material and appear very much like the existing windows. And we believe that we found those windows. I will tell you that following the last meeting, given some of the questions and concerns, the board, the applicant went again out on a search and has found the same kind of window with a couple of minor changes that are different in essentially construction and a couple of things like instead of folding in at a hundred and twenty degrees, they now fold in at ninety degrees where they were before a hundred and twenty. The interior soft it is to be built for track and windows when stacking. The top rail of the windows will not show as it's going to be tucked under the existing framing. Also pursue it to numerous requests by a member. The applicant reached out to Ipswich Glass, who there happened to be familiar with the owner. He does not make this kind of window without muttons. He referred us to another company who also does not make this kind of window without muttons. So we did find a different, a little bit different window, though. And if you could go to the next slide, please. So with this, I'm going to turn it over to Dan to review this, this, which basically is the same as last time. He can talk a little bit about if there are any changes, you can see some of the changes. And then he will also talk about the cross section, which this board requested and which we have provided. So Dan, I'll turn it over to you to to go over this in the cross section.
Thank you, Lisa. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Dan Richerelli, Seagull Architects, eighty-three North Street, Salem, Mass. zero one nine seven zero. As Lisa said, we did a lot of research and we knew that one of the the main issues with the previous submission that we had is that when the windows were in the closed position, there were gaps between the plate glass. Well, we've researched and we found there is a nano wall system and there are other manufacturers that make something very similar to that, where there is a vertical transparent weather seal. So when these panels are in the closed position, is virtually clear. So it looks like one sheet of glass going across. And I think that is the effect that the board is looking to have. And this product is is able to deliver. So as far as the the opening size, we talked about there was some a little bit of diminishing of the of the opening size based on the fact that there is a rail at the bottom of the window, the operable window. There was a four and a half inch difference from the existing to the proposed. But at the top of the window, we are concealing it completely behind the existing aluminum panel there at the head. Can we go on to the next slide? Thank you. So in cross section, you'll see that there's a form sticking out from the building of former haunting protection and the Roman panel, which will remain. And you can see that the top of the new system, the arable wall system is tucked behind the existing. It could be Carrara vitrally storefront glazing bead, which we will keep in place. So literally, the only thing that will be removed is the original plate glass to be replaced by the arable wall system. So there's a bottom track seal with a little sill to keep out weather. There is a single glazed arable wall of glass, which is similar to the glass which exists today. Energy wise, it's single glass currently and will be single glazed glass going forward. And then the top rail, which will be supported behind all the historic fabric from the steel beam up at the second floor, we may have to hang down steel. Once we get going, construction open up that wall will better know what our detail is for actually hanging and supporting that vitrally panel glass system of facade. On the bottom right corner jam detail, you can see that we are maintaining all the profiles which currently exist today. We're setting the window back. So none of those profiles on the original stops for the glazing will be removed. And if they are removed to be to be, they'll be salvaged, obviously, then then replaced after post installation of the glass. There will be a corner mullion, which needs to be installed. Currently, it's just butt glazing, but that cannot exist because we have a functioning window going up against that surface. And the return skewed glazing will be matching, but not functioning. So that will remain in the plate glass look post-construction. Is there another slide?
I think the next slide, Dan, is so the other thing that the board asked for, thank you, Dan, the other thing the board asked for were some photographs of similar situations. So I know the nano wall on the top left is a full full wall. But the then we have the two lower photographs, which are similar openings.
That's correct.
So you can go to the next slide, please. We're asking the board to review this under the DOD special permit criteria, which we have reviewed with the board before. And it requires the alterations to be compatible with the existing historic building and structures within the DOD. If you go to the next slide, please. And here we believe the current proposal is to replace the windows with operable windows and essentially the same openings. There's little to no change of appearance in the windows, which will not have dividers or muttons. There's no impact on the form or integrity of the structure or the structures within the DOD. As I noted earlier, the sign is to be cleaned, but will remain the same, except for we will be replacing those plastic pieces as noted before. The alterations that are proposed are compatible with the existing historic structure and the structures within the DOD. And with that, Madam Chair, we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I'd like at this point to take questions for clarification on what's been presented. We will have further discussion, but after we hear from public comment. So right now it's just for questions about what you've just heard. Are there any?
Bonnie, this is Don. One question with respect to the cross section, I think the drawing showed the sill or the jam. Would it have been possible, or perhaps the architect can explain? That's what's proposed. If you could show what is existing. And again, I appreciate, as you said, on the head, it's being covered by the awning. So I guess I'd be more concerned with the sill. I think it showed two or three inches or it's discussed in the past. And I think someone said that the existing one is the happening. So what we would see on the bottom of the window, i.e. the sill is maybe an extra inch, inch and a half of of metal. I'm sure they're not trying to lead the witness, but that's a clarifying question I have for comment. Thank you.
Yes, Don, you're correct. We are setting the window back so as not to disturb the the stop, the original aluminum stop for the plate glass. And in doing that, in the pivoting action of the window, we need to set that back about two and three quarter inches. So the window is able to operate on its pivot. If it can get closer, we will definitely do it as a field installation. But based on the manufacturer's details, that's the clearance I need to make that work. And there will be a small matching closure aluminum sill. You can see that will go out to the existing stops.
I think Dan, I think also Dan, what what Don was asking is the the band or the the strip, it's not, that's not the proper terminology, along the bottom of the window is that is a little bit larger than now than the original. I think that Julia talked about that last time. So I think it's it may be an inch and a half or two inches larger. Is that the question you were asking, Don?
Yeah, it was. And I really do appreciate the other clarifying, that the window itself will be away from the street by another several inches due to the pivoting. So that's, that's a point I didn't appreciate. So I appreciate that point as well.
I'm sorry, Don, I misunderstood.
That's all right. I have, I actually have the numbers. Do you have them, Don, Dan? Because I have them in front of me, too.
Yeah, there was like it's a four and a quarter inch style at the bottom, bottom rail. And there's like a quarter of an inch gasketed gap at the base that rides in the track. So it's four and a half inches in total. For that.
And you know what is the existing? And you know what is the existing dimension right now?
That would be above and beyond. You can see that the existing stop is to remain. So that's the existing condition.
Okay, so it's about another four and a half inches. Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Okay, I have one question, and that is just to clarify the panel, the the side panel, which will not be operable. I got the impression that that might look slightly different from the operable window panels. Can you clarify that for me?
Um, the only difference is that it will not function. When we talked to the manufacturer, the panels may be a little larger because it's not functioning.
Okay.
But that's really the only difference.
So it's slightly larger, but it's not like there's going to be a glazing on it that looks different.
That's correct.
Great. Thank you. I see Bob's hand up.
Thanks, Bonnie. Just a couple of quick questions. If you could go back to the photograph of the storefront that we've been looking at. The photograph, if we could. Yeah, thank you. Just one question about the the corner detail and how the the section of operable panels transitions around the corner to the the fixed glazing. It seems like that corner mullion, the the new corner mullion that you're proposing is is standing quite proud of the glass. And and I, if I remember, the detail comes out almost flush with the panel below the glass. And I'm wondering, given the nature of this window and the fact that it's, you know, basically wrapping that corner continuously, is there a way for you to take a look at minimizing that that mullion at the corner, perhaps even putting a portion of it on the inside of the glass so that it's less visible? Because it it does. Yeah, exactly. That does change the character of that corner quite a bit.
Yeah, Robert, I agree. And I played with that quite a bit. It looks bulky, but you know, I started adding blockings. Wait a minute, this is only like three and a half inches. So it is is fairly small. And can I actually bring that in? I'm trying to hold on to the glazing bead from the original plate glass. But if that is sacrificed, I could make that minimal. I could bring that more. So.
That's actually, yeah, it's it's kind of the second part of my question is I'm curious about the the glazing beads and how how those get treated since since they're not holding the glass any longer. There 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 is a kind of trim element at at the opening.
Basically terminating the vitrally, yes, the.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. I think it's part of the storefront system. It should remain.
Okay. Well, I think if there's a way of of minimizing that corner and and trying to wrap the corner, I understand what you're saying about the glazing bead. So it it may not work out, but it it might be worth a second look at that.
I don't disagree.
The the only other comment I have is, I mean, this has obviously been a long process. And you know, I think the goals of the applicant are quite difficult to achieve, to try to create a weather tight storefront on, you know, nineteen forty's mid twentieth century vintage kind of art deco exterior with.
Hello, can I stop you a moment? This portion is just to get questions clarified before we hear from the public.
All right.
They will be appropriate.
I'll hold off. So so that that's all of my questions that, but thanks.
Great. Okay. I don't see any more hands up or anybody trying to get my attention. So I'd like to turn this over to public comments. If you'd like to speak, please give your name and your address and limit your comments to two minutes, please. Thank you. And Andy will call on you.
Okay, first person we have is Glenn Richards.
Yeah, yeah, it took it took me a few seconds to find you. Glenn Richard, Sixth County Street, and speaking strictly for myself here, not. Okay, can you hear me still? Can I make my unmute popped up again?
Yes, you're fine.
Okay, sorry. Glenn Richard, Sixth County Street, not speaking for or on behalf of the Newbury Historical Commission, but just on my own. Just real quickly, um, you know, a lot of progress over the past year with this. So I thank the applicant for the forward progress that's been made. I know last meeting, Ms. Caswell made an impassioned plea, and I appreciate her frustration at the length of time, but I would take a moment to remind her that I and another member met with her back in February of two thousand and twenty-one. And so they could review, you know, to share with the commission what their plans were. And we told her that, you know, changing windows was going to be problematic, but you know, they decided to try to do it. I should, you know, and I don't understand why it's so urgent to have operable windows. Two of the three restaurants she mentioned from back in the day have storefront type windows. I realized the Stickenstein, those windows have been changed out. But Skandia and Stickenstein both had storefront types, ten center streets and a kind of a former, what looks like a former residence. That one has windows, although I doubt they open them because people like air conditioning in the summer. So I wanted to mention that. And and I like to, I think it's important to remember that we're not talking, you know, the word term windows is thrown around a lot, but please, you know, refer back to the historical report where they try to explain the difference between a right, you know, a window versus a storefront system with this kind of glazing. But I think most people by now kind of understand that. And the last comment I have is just that, you know, getting back to the frustration and the length of time, you know, the the planning board, the historical commission, the ZB, these are all boards whose job it is to represent the interests of the city and by and by extension, the people of the city. So naturally, you know, that's that's their role. We understand that the applicant is interested in their their role, their their, what they want to get done. So, you know, I would encourage the applicants, you know, not to take things you know, so personally, you know, it's not personal, you know, we're just trying to look out for the interest of the city and the residents there and and tourists, for that matter. That's it. Thanks.
Next speaker is John Growitz. And John, you'll have to unmute on your end as well.
Hi, thank you, John Growitz, one forty-nine Merrimack Street. I just want to thank the board for the time they've spent on this and the suggestions they've made. I think ultimately it's resulted in a great product and I appreciate the architects in the applicant's efforts to replicate something that is important to all of Newburyport. Or most, I should say. But I think that the new design and the new elements that were shown today show that the applicant has listened and is moving forward in the direction that both the historical commission has advised and also that the planning board has advised. And I think that it's a great looking design at this point. So I hope that the board goes ahead and approves this. I know it's been a long process for everyone, and I think that we'd like to see it go forward and hopefully it will after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ron Delowski.
Yeah, I'm done.
I would take issue with attorney meat statement that the banner sign issue was settled after the last meeting. My understanding was that the.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Deluski, would you please give your full name and address before you speak? And then we'd be happy to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Sure. Sorry about that. Ron Deluski, Emerson Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA. And sorry about that. I would, my understanding was that the petitioner had indeed agreed to a sign that was on standoffs after the last meeting. My guess is that this was an attempt, because this was not brought up again, it was an attempt to move along because they didn't feel they had the time to spec a sign on standoffs within that short amount of time. I don't know if the if the board indeed agreed to move along and not make that part of the recommendation. But I felt like I left that last meeting thinking that was still in play. On another point, I suppose it's a moot point now, but it's important nonetheless. The petitioner, their architect and their legal representative have obviously not taken this entire process seriously. In their last appearance before this board, they professed to have done much research into the operative windows. They stated to this board that the window solution they had formally presented in these legal documents were indeed appropriate for this type of installation when they clearly were not. It is amazing to me that a registered architect and a member of the bar would knowingly make such false statements, which indeed they were. I was the one, a complete utter amateur who spent two minutes on the internet and came up with the nano wall system. I don't know if it's the right solution or not, but if it took me two minutes, there's a reason it's taken a year for the Caswells to move this along because they haven't been doing the work. No one has been taking this project seriously. So when the petitioner has the gall to stand up as they did during the last meeting and decry the slowness of the process, I say they only have themselves to blame as they've been playing fast and loose all along, not only with this board, but with the citizens of Newburyport and others who have great affection for the final disposition of the foul sign. With that, unlike others, I suggested the board table this matter until the petitioners can prove unequivocally that the information they are supplying has been completely vetted and is verifiable. They've broken the trust on multiple occasions, and there's little hope that we can trust what they say in the future. Thank you.
Next speaker, Connor O'Keefe.
Hi, good after or good evening, rather. Connor O'Keefe, five Mosley Avenue. I speak strictly for myself as a interested citizen, no relationship with the with the applicant, architects, or really any other members of the board. Couple of things that I would like to highlight. First and foremost, I the previous comments, in my opinion, are nothing short of appalling. You have a local business here that has been run through the wringer for the better part of the past two years before you even account for, quite frankly, this bureaucratic nonsense. They put time, effort and money into developing their business and maintaining their business. What they are asking for is completely reasonable. And any individual bureaucrat or otherwise that seeks to sully the reputation of a local business owner and employer really ought to take a step back, take a deep breath and reevaluate. It's completely unacceptable that something quite frankly, this limited in scope has taken over a year. It's frankly embarrassing. I'm a new individual to this town, a new citizen of this town. And I can tell you right now, just having heard the past half an hour here, as well as the lead up to this, the story behind it. You have been dealing with an individual that exhibits far more respect and far more patience than I or many others would have exhibited. This matter should be closed out tonight. And a local business should be able to implement their plans accordingly. Thank you.
Andy? This is, before you call on anyone else, I would like to state for the record and for guidance for other members of the public who would like to speak that we are taking comments on what has been presented tonight in relationship to what might have been presented in the past for comparison. This is an application for a an alteration of a an historic storefront and window in downtown Newburyport. And I would very much appreciate that people speak to the issues at hand. Thank you very much. We'll hear from the next member of the public who would like to speak.
Thank you, Chair Suntag. Next speaker is identified as Dee Levine. And if you could just again state your name and address for the record.
This is David Levine, fifteen Milk Street in Newburyport. And let me just say a couple of things. One is, I think that this latest plan provides the best of both worlds. It allows a significant contributor to the Newburyport economy to provide a better experience and therefore more tax dollars because there'll be more clients, especially in the warm months, whilst meeting the expectations of the board that there be little change to the effect of the current storefront or files. The sign is being maintained, the banner is being maintained. The windows will fold and provide air and a much nicer environment during the hot summer months. But at the same time, But at the same time, when those windows are closed, there'll be very little alteration. And I think that's exactly what the board has been looking for. I think it's important to remember that we're not Deerfield, we're not Sturbridge Village, we're not Williamsburg, we're a thriving community and the Caswells have contributed a great deal to that community. And they've bent over backwards to meet your requirements. And I can see no reason whatsoever, based on what's been presented tonight, why that shouldn't go for, they should not be able, allowed to go forward with the plan as it's public, as it's been stated this evening. Thank you.
Uh, we have no other hands raised at this time, Chair Sontag.
Fine, we will close the public comment portion. Oops.
Sorry Jared, we did have just one hand raised just now.
Okay.
Yeah, Jacqueline Lavassar.
Hi, thank you, Jacqueline Lavassar, 1 Merrimack Street. I appreciate the level of effort and all of the information that's been shared during this process. I, my husband and I are very much in support of this approach. When I think about the past two years especially, uh, I think we have to do everything that we can possibly do to support business owners. The Caswells have a known and successful enterprise. And if we want to support the city from a, a, a progressive standpoint, I think it's in our best interest to allow this design to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so Sharon Nelson, new hands raised.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and go back into deliberation. And I will give Bob the opportunity to make his statement without being interrupted. Uh, you're muted, Bob.
Sorry, thanks. Wh- what I was going to say is, you know, that the, the applicant has faced a, a particular challenge here. Trying to, trying to find an operable window system that meets the visual requirements of this protected facade. And I, I think the reality is that, that without a frame, the system will have certain compromises. And I'm familiar with Nano Wall. It's a, it's a very high quality product. I think in reality, given, given the constraints, it's, it's probably the best you're going to do in terms of, of creating an operable window system. And, you know, at the same time, it, it will still have issues. Uh, I, I talked with the Nano Wall people about this particular system because I, I wasn't familiar with it. And they said the, their biggest market for this, they described it as a windbreak. They said their biggest market was luxury boxes in stadiums, three season rooms. So all of that implies that, you know, there will be a little bit of air infiltration. There may be a little bit of water infiltration. Visually, I, I don't think there's an argument that, that it, it meets the standards that, that we have been looking for. But I am concerned that, that post approval of this and installation, if the owners experience issues with the environment inside of these windows. And keep in mind that, that the end of the bar on the right hand side is only a few feet inside of the windows. If, if there are issues with that, then, then this may be subject to modification going forward in order to meet, you know, environmental concerns. And, and so Chair, I would ask what, what is the process in a case where there, there might be modifications to this at some future date to make it more airtight in, in colder months? Otherwise, you know, otherwise I think it, it meets the, the basic criteria. I think the building commissioner has a, a lot to consider relative to code compliance, but I will leave that to the building commissioner to deal with. I, I'm just concerned that this, this may be subject to modification later on.
Well, just to that point, it's always considered it's the standard operating procedure, basically, that if a modification to a decision is requested by a property owner, they go back through the planning office for a determination. And then if they determine it's significant enough, it comes to us either as a minor or a major modification. So we would, we, if, if they couldn't deal with it, if they don't feel they, they could deal with it, it would come back to us promptly. And your point about the building commissioners authority over, what am I looking for? The, the,
Code, code compliance.
Code compliance. Everyone should know that I've spoken with Commissioner Greg Earles. And he said he will abide by our decision. It's a special permit. And we, if we decide that the system works for all the reasons under the DOD that we have purview over, he will, he will abide by that, that we know, he knows that we have no purview over over the, the weather tightness of it. And that we have other constraints that we're looking at here so that we make a clear justification as we do with the findings and the general and specific special permit findings and conditions. And that will guide what he approves on site. So Don, let's hear from you.
Sure, I'd like to follow up on Bob's point and your point. On the Newburyport Building Code, and I'll digress for a moment only because it's relevant to the planning board. I'm surely not trying to usurp any authority by the building official. But the Newburyport Building Code, as you would expect, references the Massachusetts Building Code, in the Massachusetts Building Code, section 309, point three, point two, says replacement decline when repair of historic materials, including patching, splicing, piercing and reinforcement is not possible. Compatible materials may be substituted which closely convey the form and design as well as the visual appearance of the existing structure, of the existing feature. What this means, if you replace something in time, you do not, I'd like to emphasize, do not have to follow energy efficiency, the IECC code, no requirement. It can be gaps, whatever it is, whether it's serviceable or not, I'm not convinced that's our purview. It's the owner's issue, I think. But to me, that's very cut and dry. The question that I have, and I haven't necessarily heard it from the planning board members, nor did I read, I reread again, the historic commission report. As, and, and I appreciate Glenn may, may still be on this call, but only as a, as a citizen and not necessarily a chair of the circle. I have not heard anywhere that this proposed glazing system, and again, I understand it's the whole storefront. I think most people agree the rest of the storefront has been restored almost impeccably or will be restored almost impeccably. Is, is the glazing system, is this glazing system with how you see it, is that historic? Or is it replacement in kind? Because if it is, I have no other issues and everything makes sense to me. But to me, that's a key point. Now, someone may say, and the applicants did propose also provide the IECC, what they call section R 501.6. I think one could argue whether the Massachusetts Building Code, because it provides this exception to the IECC, whether R 501.6, which talks about what the applicant said were a design, register design provisions, something that you can't follow it. Uh, I, I think I'd be glad to discuss that, but I think really it's replacement in kind. So if this system, these windows are replacement in kind, whatever that means, unfortunately it's not a definition. Then I, I think the, the proposal is acceptable. Thanks, Bonnie.
Other comments from the planning board? Rick, sorry.
Thank you. So I thought I heard the architect say that the window system, first of all, I, I believe that well is, is a, is a high class system. I think it's a good approach. I thought I heard him say that the glass in that, is a single pane glass that was going to be very similar to the existing glass in the storefront. And I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I think the thing that we were most concerned about was whether it was appropriate for the product that was being proposed was appropriate for an exterior application. And I believe that is the case with this proposal. However, we also heard from the applicant that the existing windows were problematic because people near the windows were too cold in the winter and too hot in the summer. So that raises a concern for me. And again, I mean, I'm inclined to think that this is a, maybe the best approach to providing open, operable windows for the storefront. But I'm concerned that there would be subsequent, perhaps subsequent changes that would be proposed. So, and I will make this, I will, I will make a proposal for a condition when we get to that point. But I would like to be sure that we're not approving something that would then lead to the installation of interior storm windows, for example, that would have the same problem with aesthetics that we were talking about with. And I don't mean aesthetics, but I mean consistency with the historic character of the storefront that we were concerned about it originally. So that's just my concern. And I don't, I, I, I think we should, my feeling is we should move forward with this approach. But with the, with the, with the condition that there not be further changes to the windows without coming back to the planning board.
I saw Terry needs hand go up while you were speaking. So if, if you'd like to respond to what Rick was saying, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Bonnie. Actually, I'm going to let Dan address it because I think he's going to tell you that the window is actually a little thicker than what exists there today. So Dan.
Yeah, the window is thicker, it has a lamination in it and it's tempered. So it is, it's a thicker product. What I was referring to is the fact that it's not dual glazed, it's single glazed, similar to what the plate glass is today. And there will be supplemental HVAC at the windows, which doesn't exist currently. So there'll be a little more heat being thrown at the windows. So people will feel more comfortable as well as AC. I hope that answers your question, Richard.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Beth.
Thanks, Bonnie. Um, so just a couple of questions. I think the architect had mentioned that it may be possible to make that jam smaller. And Bob had suggested putting it inside. I just wondered when they might know whether that could be made smaller. I think I, I find that to be kind of a significant change. It appears that there's really nothing, no post there currently, and that to me will significantly change the look of the windows. So I'm curious about what is there now at the corner, if there is a post that I'm not aware of. And then when you might determine whether it could be made smaller. Also wondering if there are rails on the sides of the windows currently. And wondering what that might look like if the windows are set back two and a half inches, if there's going to be any, how that's going to look, if anything's going to be visible on the sides. I do have concerns about the, how the windows are going to look being pushed two and a half inches back and sort of set inside the current system. And then I'm wondering, is this solution, will it be reversible? If it turns out that this doesn't work and it's not as airtight as people are hoping, will they be able to, is there anything that is going to be done that is going to make it so glass couldn't be installed to sort of make it look like it does now if this solution doesn't work out?
Okay, Dan, could
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no problem. Yes, it will be reversible. And that's the intent. All the original fabric on the facade, the glazing stops, the existing place, everything will be remain in place. So everything is really constructed from the inside and can be removed as well. It's really only an inch and three eighths gap. The two and three eighths I spoke about is to the center line of the pivot of the window, which set how the window operates and why the setback exists. So it's a very small gap. And when we work at the manufacturer and worked with the installer during construction, if there's a brush or something similar, matching material, we'll, we'll apply that too to close that gap, but that gap has to exist for the windows to operate, but it's very, very small. And it was a first question, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
There were two other questions, Dan. There was a question about the, the posts.
Yeah, currently there is no post. Yeah, they call it, it's a butt glaze detail, which means it's just a silicone joint joining those two windows. So there is no post there currently, and this post is called a meeting rail. We need a meeting rail for the window to seal against. It's currently designed as only three and a quarter inches. The manufacturer, as we get through the shop drawing process and the, the engineering will let us know if that can be reduced. I think that's a very, very small detail, considering the size of these windows. So I, I, I listened to, to Robert and if we can reduce it. But I think we ended up, we really wanted to hold on to the look of the glazing stops in that plane and have it match. I think that will be less distracting than trying to reduce the size of that mullion.
And then, uh, Dan, if you could talk about the rails on the edge, on either edge, the question was, was there a rail there today? And then, and then obviously there's a rail there.
I'm not really understanding what that question's about. At least if she's talking, is there's a gap at the jam? It would be similar to the inch and quarter gap, which is at the, the head too. The setback, is that what?
I, I think that, Andy, if you could go to the edge of the windows on the right hand side, next to the, the building frame. Right? So if you could take your cursor just to show Dan, because I of course can't do that. So if you can see where it says frame right there. So Dan, you see Andy's cursor? That, that detail right there, I think that, yeah, the question is, that's the same that exists today.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Beth, your question's answered.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
We'll move on to Heather.
Yes, mine's not a question, just a comment. I'm really pleased with this version. And I give the applicant credit because they've been moving along and researching as we've requested more information. And I feel like these are seamless and they're actually going to allow like the historic nature of the facade to shine because these aren't going to be the focus of the building, the way this is laying out. That's how it appears to me. So I'm very pleased with this.
Okay, thank you for speaking to the historic nature of it because I was hoping somebody would get back to, you know, what we're looking at, at, under the DOD. So that's helpful. I don't know who was up first. Let me give it to Bob.
Thanks, Bonnie. Just, just a quick question back, back to this corner detail again. Will Nano Wall be providing, or do you, do you imagine that Nano Wall would provide the fixed glass panel as well?
Yes.
So really that, that corner mullion is part of their system in a way?
It's constructed currently. They're probably going to, they may have a product.
I'm, I'm just wondering if they, if they have something that might be aluminum that, that might be smaller, that, that meets all of those requirements that you have at the corner. But if, if their system wraps the corner and is the operable panels as well as the fixed panels, I would encourage you to work with them on trying to minimize the sightlines to that corner mullion. I realize you have to come out to, to receive the stops that are there, but there may be a way of but there may be a way of making it a little bit narrower in terms of the sightline from the street, what we're looking at in this elevation. If, if it were metal rather than pressure treated wood that's clad with, with something. So just would encourage you to, to work with them on that detail.
Great, thank you, Robert.
Thanks.
Rick, you're next.
Thank you. Just another question. When I watched the NanoWall video, the person who was demonstrating the windows said that there had to be a handle in each set of windows to start the opening process, which in, in what he showed was a handle in the middle of the, the window, which would be fairly obvious, I would think. I wonder whether you could look at, because this is only four and a half feet rather than seven feet is the way the window that was demonstrated. I wonder if that handle could be made horizontal in the bottom sill somehow, connected to the bottom sill so that it was less visible from the outside. Otherwise, I think you're going to lose the continuous storefront look.
Yeah, Rick, that, those are probably pretty floor to ceiling, pretty tall glazing systems. There will be nothing in the glass. It'll all be at the bottom style. That is why that style is there to affect the operation of the windows.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alden?
Yeah, I just wanted to add my comments. I think the, the previous questions and answers covered some of my concerns and so I think I'm I'm pleased with this new solution. It does look like it's more airtight and so on. So I think this is a, a good solution to the concerns we had. Thanks.
Okay, so that seems to be everything on the, the window part of the facade. Is that, anything else on that that anybody wants to comment on? So we do have one other issue and it was referred to briefly. And that is the brine lettering and our request last time that a submission be made for the office to approve, the planning office to approve, how the, the letters of brine would be not painted directly on the panels of the fouls etched lettering, but rather stand out from it. And I know there's been some discussion with the applicant and the planning director and I, it's going to become a condition in the, in the final decision. So I would just like to have a description of what you're planning to do there, either from, well, I'll start with Attorney Mead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant doesn't yet have a system. I think that's what, I think that's what they told the the planning director because we were trying to focus on the, the window question. That's why I thought we had this discussion last time about the condition. So we're fine, obviously with not painting it on the, the etched glass. The applicant has to come up with a methodology not to damage the glass, but to have the lettering on there. And if they can come up with that, they will provide it to the planning staff for review and approval. And obviously if, if they feel that it's, you know, over their pay grade, they'll bring it back to the board, but that's, we haven't moved off of that yet.
Okay, so you don't have any, any even conceptual ideas about what that might look like? Okay, so we'll, we'll leave it in the condition and I like what you said about the fact that the planning office will make the decision whether or not it's under their, you know, within their purview. And if they have any questions at all, they'll bring it back to the board just so the board members are comfortable that when we just make a a statement about that sign being approved by the office, they know what that entails.
Yeah, we, we agree with that.
Okay, good. Any other loose bits before we go through the findings and any conditions that we want to add to this? From any, the, either the applicant or board members?
I think the applicant is all set, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Great. Okay. We have listed in the staff report, DOD special permit draft findings. They refer specifically to the replacement of windows, but there's the next to the last bullet that also references replacement of the wall sign, structural glass panels and facade materials are acceptable, et cetera. So we've covered all of that here, unless there's a detail in those those special permit draft findings, I won't go through them in excruciating detail right now. Any questions or comments to change any of that? Okay, and by exception, I will also ask if there are any concerns about the general special permit findings, which are all about use. Those are pretty straightforward. Okay, the only thing left be for this, that decision would be special conditions and from what I've heard, these are the three. I don't know that the wording is exactly what will go in, but I trust that the planning office can make it legal, legally appropriate. Number one, any change whatsoever from this decision must come back to the planning board for review and approval. Number two, no interior storm windows. Just to reiterate that that would, as we all know, change the look of, of the windows within the storefront. And third, the brine sign will be submitted to the planning office for final approval, especially with regard to any elements of it that might not permanent, that should not permanently affect the glass panels on the banner. Andy, does all of that work for you?
Yes, I understand that. Per the discussion both here and at the last hearing, that signage would obviously not be on the glass itself, but essentially floating, as I think was mentioned earlier. Above that, I understand, well, generally speaking, would be acceptable for submission and review under this condition. So that certainly works for me and we understand how to incorporate that into the final decision, unless there's any other conditions this evening.
Well, the other two that I noted earlier.
Sorry, beyond that, yes.
Thank you. Planning board members, any other conditions or variations on the ones that I noted? Rick?
So this is maybe just saying what you said differently. So I'll just offer my wording and you can choose what you like. With respect to the, I was going to say this approval was limited to the window design presented to the board and no interior storm windows or visible weather seals shall be installed without planning board approval of an amended special permit. I'm not tied to that wording, but I thought having something about any visible weather seals being added to the, to the window design might just be a little bit stronger.
I don't know if the, is that okay for the applicant?
Well, Madam Chair, I would just want to be clear that it would be additional, right? Because these do have that little clear seal in it, right? So I believe, Rick, you're talking about additional. So that would be my only.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
Good. Oh, Bob, yes.
I'm not sure this is a condition or not, but I, I don't see a reference on the drawings to the finish on the visible aluminum frame for the windows. Could, could you comment on that quickly? I don't know if we want to make a condition that, that, you know, it, it has been represented in a certain way, but it, it's called out as aluminum, but I don't know if it's clear aluminum or painted a color or.
It's brushed, Bob.
It's brushed aluminum. Okay, thank you.
And is that stated somewhere in the plan?
I don't see it stated anywhere and I, I don't know whether you want to make that a condition or not.
It's, it's a small detail.
If there's any concern, we can just add that language to the special condition if you'd like.
No, I don't think it's, it's a detail that, that has been confirmed and I don't think we have to worry about it.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Thanks.
Okay, if there's no further comments or addition to the decision, I will take a motion to approve.
This is Rick. I will make the motion as to approve the DOD special permit application as stated in the staff report with the conditions that we have discussed.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Alden.
Any further discussion? Any clarification of the motion? All right, I will go through. Are, everybody is eligible to vote except for Jamie, so I will take an abstention from him. But I'll go through the list individually. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
No.
Pardon me?
No.
No. Okay. Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Upstate.
Heather?
Sorry. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes, so it is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
You're done. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to general business. There's going to be some discussion going on there and we should have done this in the beginning and I didn't and it's a little awkward over Zoom, but we should have some very brief introductions with our newest member who was just appointed on Monday night. So I'm going to take a very quick break. I'm throwing this at you, Jamie, really fast, but each of us will say just a little something. You might want to say a little something more to say hello. And then we'll move on to our general business.
So, so thank you for having me tonight. It's a pleasure to be on this board. I served 10 years on the zoning board of appeals, took a bit of a break, now I'm back into it. So I look forward to working with you all.
And can you tell us why you think you were put on the board? Not just because you've been on the zoning board 10 years and you're a glutton for punishment.
Well, it's like magic. I am an architect. That is my background. I also have a background in real estate finance and affordable housing in particular. And so I, you know, I really do care for the city and, and the, the character of it. It's why we all live here and so I'm, I'm more advanced in my career than when I was on the ZBA, so hopefully I have more to contribute this time around.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to just go around in reverse order for everybody to to say a little bit, something about themselves so that Jamie knows who he's talking with later on in the meeting. We'll start with Don.
Hey Jamie, welcome aboard. Glad, glad you decided to come back for more punishment, as Bonnie said, but I've been a member for, I guess, close to 15 years and happy to be a registered professional engineer as well as doing significant amount of work in finance and most of my work has been in development, albeit for energy facilities. Thanks.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, you know Rick, so I'm going to just move on to Heather.
Hi, I'm Heather Rogers. I'm a real estate agent in Newburyport. I'm, I guess, the newest member previous to you. I came on board in the fall, so I'm still learning, but I'm enjoying it. I live here in town and I'm excited to go forward and, and get more involved as I'm learning from all of you people.
Okay, Bob?
Amy, welcome. I'm also an architect. So nice, nice to have a compatriot on the board. I've been in Newbury Ford for about two and a half years with my wife, have been on the planning board, I think. Bonnie, I think it was August when I started. So I'm a fairly new member as well. Welcome. Thanks.
Beth?
Hi, Jamie, welcome. I'm Beth Delisle. I am an environmental and land use attorney here in town. I have been on the board, I guess, is it three years now, Bonnie? That seems in COVID times, you know? Doesn't feel like three years, but I think it might be. Yeah, so I have lived in town. I grew up here and then moved back in 2017. So looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Alden?
Yeah, hi, welcome, Jamie. I have been on the board just coming up on two years, so fairly new. I still feel like I'm learning. You may have a leg up on us with, with your past experience, so I'm glad to have you aboard. I have been living in Newburyport for five years. I live in the, in the South End and enjoying it here, so welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll be talking about when we meet in person and can do this more comfortably at the end of the meeting. Okay, we're going to move on with our agenda, general business. Thank you for waiting to the next applicant. This is a change in the agenda. The applicant has been notified by the planning office. In fact, I don't even know if she's here. 13 Doyle Drive, the request for a minor modification is within the Colby Farm open space residential development and it's the first one that we approved and that is is finished at this point and they're working on the second one across the street. It's turned out that the issuance of a certificate of compliance by the Conservation Commission has not been finalized by the developer and therefore any modifications that have to do with the really any of it, but basically outdoor layout and, and changes to any of the individual lots really shouldn't occur until that certificate of compliance has been issued. And so the decision was made by the planning office to ask the, to work with the developer on that particular certificate and then ask the applicant to apply at a later time. So we're not even going to hear the application tonight. It's it's on hold, maybe even withdrawn. I'm not quite sure what the official status of it will be. And it will come back to us when the major issue is resolved and the application can be fully complete. So that's why we're not hearing it tonight. We will move on then to the discussion of the proposed zoning for short-term rental.
Before we move on, I have a question for Andy about the Doyle Drive application. Sure. Is, so this was meant to be a minor modification of a special permit. Now, if it were, well, is, do we have any issues with constructive approval if we don't act or should, or should this, should there actually be a formal vote to continue?
No, this was not a formal, a permit application that would trigger that. This is after that subsequent permit application, this is a modification to that, so it doesn't have that same effect of constructive approval. It's also worthy of note that it's up to the board to decide if there's anything that might be major enough to require a hearing again, which would then necessitate the filing and it'll create questions later on about a potential constructive approval, but not in this instance, that does not have that effect. So our assumption is again, not the need for a continuance to any specific date, but rather as the chair mentioned, that we would carry this in the next agenda, assuming the applicant's able to resolve the issue or issues. And if not, it would be a future meeting after that.
Thank you.
Okay, short-term rental. We've closed the public hearing. It is still in committee with the city council and the follow-up to that meeting that I didn't attend is tonight's discussion because we need to make a report and our recommendation to the city council. I know we've covered a lot of this territory already and it feels like some of it's being reopened, but we have to deal with the most recent proposed amendment and therefore we should be hitting the key points in our discussions so that our trustee report consolidate, our consolidator and trustee report writer, Rick, will know what to write on our behalf. consolidate, our consolidator and trustee report writer, Rick, will know what to write on our behalf. He has suggested five questions that we consider. And we may end up looping some of the later questions into the earlier ones, but I was I'm going to try to keep us going and lockstep one after the other to get everybody's comments on each one of these and where we can reach an agreement or consensus. That's great. If there is a difference of opinion, that will be noted and we'll figure it out at the end. How we want to handle the actual writing of the recommendations. For Jamie's purposes, I'd like to have your comments. I mean, I don't see any reason why you can't comment on this. We're not taking a vote. So it's not something that, you know, you have to have been here before. On, it's just a recommendation, just, it is a recommendation to the city council. So I'd like you to feel free to participate as you feel like you want to on this one.
Thank you. May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is the version online on the city dated December 13th, the most recent draft that I should look to?
Uh, yeah.
That's the most recent, I think, formal version. There have been discussions of edits or changes to certain provisions amongst the council discussion or even the joint hearing, but we haven't seen a revised version distributed that addresses those. So again, we're happy to distribute it, post and notify you. That's posted more recent versions as, as they come along.
Yeah, there's, there, this wouldn't, we wouldn't expect to have another version if it's still in committee. This is the version that was discussed at the last joint public hearing.
I'm sure if I could, we do have the chair did stop in my, the sponsor of the ordinance just stopped my office today and he had noted that it would be helpful, he thought, for the council to have any, if there's any specifications or specifics that the planning board had relative to the parking, and I know that Rick has that as a potential fifth question. You know, what the parking impacts are for different categories or locations, and he was just indicating that one thing that might be helpful is if the planning board has any specific recommendations relative to parking, that those be included in the recommendation to the full council.
Well, he's going to get a whole lot more than parking. Yeah, that's
Okay.
But that gives me another thought that whatever you have to say on any of the five issues that we're going to be discussing, please, please either give a rationale or give an example because that will help to explain what it is, why it is that we're making a particular statement. And it'll help the rest of us, of course, in understanding why you're saying what you're saying. So that would be really helpful. Let's get started with the first question. Should short term rental units be allowed only in properties that are the primary residence of the owner as currently proposed? Or should investor owned properties also be eligible? Who wants to dive into that one first? I'll dive in. I think it's really important to have owner occupied properties. It will avoid or at least reduce the chance for all the issues that have been risen, risen in opposition to these types of units in residential areas. If an owner is on the property at the time of the rental because they live there, they're going to be immediately affected by anything that might affect the neighbors. The only exception to that, of course, is even though it's their own property, if it is a home share and the owner's gone away for a month and is renting it in their absence, obviously, they have to have somebody responsible as if they were the owner, but they wouldn't, that person wouldn't be right on site. But it's still the owner's occupied residence that is being rented. And I think, as we well know, owners take a very strong interest in what happens to the property where they live. And I think that could only be for the benefit of the short term renters, of the neighbors and of the city in as a whole. So I am strongly in favor of owner occupied property being used for short term rentals.
Just, just to, I agree completely. And, and, you know, for me, with, with all of these questions that we'll be talking about tonight, I think we have to refer back to the, the first paragraph that was written about the, the purpose of of this zoning amendment and, and the fact that we want to allow short term rental units to exist, give owners of property the opportunity to take advantage of this market. But without there being a negative impact on the neighborhood. And, and just to reiterate what, what you were saying, Bonnie, I think, I think owner occupiers are obviously invested in their neighborhood. And what, what I think is occurring in Newburyport right now in the absence of regulations is this has become a kind of commercial business with, with a lot of parties involved in it. There, there are property managers, there, there are real estate brokers, there are cleaning companies, there are maintenance companies. And, and all, all pushing the volume of, of units that are available because they're all building a business. And, you know, I think if you were to open this up to outside investors, the volume of that would, would continue to increase and, and we would fundamentally change the nature of the historic neighborhoods in town. And I'm not saying it shouldn't exist, but I'm saying, you know, it's one thing to talk about a scale of STRUs that, that are in owner occupied houses. It's a very different thing to talk about STRUs as, as a kind of, kind of commercial enterprise that that is part of a, you know, and, you know, investment for people who don't live in, in Newburyport at all. Because a very different thing. So I think it's really important that the owner occupied requirement stay in the amendment.
Heather?
First, I want to clarify, I think a few weeks ago when I spoke, it may have been perceived that I own short term rentals and I want to be clear that I don't. I own a long term rental. I live at 1517 Strong Street. I live at 15 and I have a 12 month lease in 17. And I've had that now for two and a half years. I called planning a few weeks ago and inquired as to whether or not there was any awareness as to how many long term rentals existed in town and there was no record of that. I I am opposed to a lot of what's in this because I feel like the problem is not in the 188 properties or whatever the number is, which we don't know. I feel like the problem is in the bigger picture. I think the long term rentals, I know on my street, you can't drive down my street. It's a two way street because people don't have driveways and they have rentals without driveways. And everybody parks in the street and it's really a conundrum that is 365 days a year. And I know we're going to get to parking on point four. But regardless, I feel like if these issues are the issues, going after short term rental is actually not the solution. I feel like it's the long term rentals who are the majority in town. And I would be curious to know, which I did ask planning and they did not have this information as to things like police reports in the long term versus police reports in the short term, what type of disturbances are in the long term annually versus in the short term, and there's no data. So to me, this is confusing because we're moving forward with numbers. We don't know. We don't know how many short term rentals there are. We don't know how many long term rentals there are. We don't know the disturbance ratios. We don't know the parking issues. I, I feel like there's a lot of unknowns to proceed into the short term rental, the way it stands now.
This is not about long term rentals. This is only
I know, but I'm saying I think these problems exist more in long term rental and we're, we're chasing the wrong.
Yeah, but that's not what we're talking about. So it's not on the table. We're only looking at short term rentals because they have been illegally operated for years in the city. And this was an issue that came up in 2017 and we've been trying to resolve it.
I am scanning though, if there was any legality to long term rentals and they said there's none.
Yeah, it's not, it's not part of the discussion. I mean, it may be causing problems, but that's not what we're talking about. So if you can focus your concerns that we want to hear about on short term rentals, that would help move this conversation along.
Okay.
Okay. Great, thanks. I don't know who went up next. Jamie?
Sorry about that. My comment was related, but a little bit different that I, I was unclear what, what the restrictions were if you were a tenant, because you, you, you mentioned kind of two types of housing, but there's a third that I don't know that's fully addressed by this and it should be addressed one way or the other, which is if you rent an apartment or a house, are you able to? It seems from the owner, most of the language you cannot, however, it's not one of the excluded units. So I think there should be clarity there, just so everyone knows what the rules are.
Are you familiar with the three categories of short term rental?
No, and I may be like, I may be, I may be missing something here. I was looking
There's a whole, there are three categories. There's the, where you can rent out your own home if you're away up to 90 days in a year. That's the home, what's that? Home share. Limited share is where you rent out one or more bedrooms up to a limit of, I believe, four bedrooms. And then there's the owner adjacent where you have a unit on your property that is, has a separate entrance and or it's a half of your house or it's over your garage or what have you. And again, you need to be present, but that is a third type of rental. So we're not going to be able to spend a lot of time educating you on what's in the ordinance, but if you hear something that doesn't make sense to you, please jump in.
Yeah, my comment's a little different than that, but I'll continue to read it. Perhaps I'll get, I'll get clarification from Reagan Moore.
Okay, thanks. Don?
Yeah, um, question on the owner occupied that Rick raised in the beginning of this discussion. Would, would refer, for that matter, any of the planning board members consider any differentiation with respect to the zones specifically B1 and B2, R1 through R3 and B2, B3, we went through B3. I, I could possibly see some difference in, in the business sectors versus the residential sectors under, taking into account that obviously there are residential units in the business sections, but I didn't know if anyone else thought there was any validity in even attempting to try to parse that differentiation. Thanks.
So are you proposing permitting or special permitting and some of those not permitted?
I think, I think Rick's language was only owner occupied units shall be allowed. Sentence end, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm saying, should there be that owner, should, should that was only allowed for R1 through R3?
Any comments on that, Rick?
Sure, that's, that's a really good point on. I hadn't thought about that at all, but certainly you know, our business districts aren't that big generally. And so there's not that much housing in it, but I, I, that's something you could possibly consider. A lot of the argument against investor owned, short term rental units is that they bring a business into a residential district. But if we're in the, if we're talking about being in a business district, then maybe that's not an issue at all. So I guess I would be open to that if, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how much that would change the number of units. I'm not sure how many short term rental units we would see in business districts, but I would certainly be open to investor ownership in a business district.
Yeah, and Rick, and I agree. I don't think the numbers are significant. I, I think it's more representative of the character of ownership of real estate in those districts compared to R1 through R3, that's all. It'd be maybe a modicum of additional consistency, that's all. So I'm, I'm flexible. I just wanted to raise it up, but you know, whatever the rest of the board wants to do.
Anyone else want to comment on that? Just so we can see if we're going to go with a new recommendation? I don't know if these hands are up for that or something else.
I could comment on that one.
Oh, you want to?
Alden, are you?
Yeah, yeah, mine wasn't specifically on that.
Okay, can we hold on to that for a second and we'll go to Bob first?
I, I, I would agree with Don and, and, and Rick about the business districts. I think that's worth talking about. I think I, I guess I'm only concerned that if, if it was not an owner occupied unit in a business district, does that open the door for kind of larger scale development of you know, buildings that, that, how, how do you restrict the number of units that, that could be rented in, in that kind of situation? Is there still language that says you can only rent one unit at a time? I mean, if somebody built a 10 unit building in a business district and they said, I'm, I'm going to run it as a short term rental unit property, is that, is that allowable with, with this kind of language or, or is there other language that, that would preclude that?
I would have assumed that it would just be the same language and you'd have the same restrictions.
Because there is language that says you can, as an owner occupier, you can only rent one unit at a time. I think there's language that says that. So I, I, I'm just wondering if, if anyone else has concerns about the, the scale of this potentially in, in a business district, if we lift the owner occupancy requirement.
Yeah, and you could change, you could have five different companies and five different names and different owners. Yeah. It gets really complicated when you play out I'm gonna, can, can people just say if you've got a comment on this particular one? So I don't know if all these raised hands are on this topic.
I'm, I'm responding to, to, to Bob's comment because I may have jumped in too soon, but as you, as you think about the way the draft ordinance is written, there's no way that any non-investor, a non-owner occupied short term rental could fit into any of those categories. They're all defined very specifically. So I, I guess what I would say in response to Don's original comment, now that I've had another minute to think about it, is that I would certainly be interested in opening this up in the future, but it's way beyond making a modification to the current draft ordinance. I think it, it would take a thorough overhaul of the ordinance. And it's much more than I think we want to recommend to the city council at this time. I like the idea. And I understand and appreciate Bob's concerns. If we felt it was really important, it would be another effort. So I think we should leave that open as an idea, but not make a recommendation to make a change at this point.
So, so Rick, this is Don, just so I understand, I'm sorry, just to right now, the zoning, the proposed ordinance is written, precludes anything but owner occupied. So I was a bit confused when you put that out there. I thought there was some part of the zoning ordinance that did allow it, and that's why you were putting that forth. So basically, if we want as is, we, we're not changing anything.
Right. I think that the, the reason I put it out there was because a number of the comments from people who were supportive of short term rental units at the public hearing anyway, and previous meetings, have been people who said, why are you taking away this route for investors to own and make money off short term rental units? So I just thought we should have it out there as a, as a, as something to think about. And I think the discussion, especially Bob's comments have, have convinced me otherwise at this point.
Yeah, and I agree. I didn't realize your, your comments were, were in response to public comment. So yeah, I retract that and I'm a big believer we should crawl before we walk. So it sounds good to me.
Okay, thanks for clarification. Alden?
Yeah, I was just looking back to the initial comments you made, Bonnie, about owner occupied versus investor, and I agree that there's definitely a different mindset when you are an owner occupied building as opposed to an investor and so forth. I guess I'm just wondering if we're going I guess I'm just wondering is if we're going to have any pushback on a situation where, um, it's not an owner adjacent, but maybe there, that's on two separate lots. You have an owner who is a resident that's nearby. And they're, they would be excluded by this language as well. So I didn't know if we were going to get some pushback on that issue. Again, I'm, I don't know how we delineate that in the ordinance though. So, um, I'm sort of up in the air about that, but I, you know, I agree that, that owner, owner occupants do have a higher uh, higher interest in preserving the, the neighborhood and the, the property and so forth. Uh, I also said comments on, on number two. I don't know if we're, if we're there yet.
There yet. I just want to finish this one off. Um, the first definite, sub definition of owner adjacent. The short term rental shall be located on the same lot as the operator's primary residence. That's it.
Right, that's all the same lot. So again, if you have two adjacent lots, I mean, they, they would be precluded. So.
I mean, I don't know how many of those there are, but there, it'd be a very small.
Me either. I don't know. Does, uh, does Heather's qualify there?
If she were to do her second half of her, the other side of her house, it's adjacent.
Those defined as two separate lots on the, uh, assessor's map.
Mine's not. Mine's one property.
Uh, okay.
Heather, cause I didn't have the answer to the other question. Okay, um, Beth?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Heather's point about the lack of data. Um, do we have any data on how many short term rental units are on Plum Island versus downtown? I mean, I I guess I can see the distinction between Plum Island and the downtown area. It makes sense in some ways, but in others, it doesn't. Um, to have something allowed on Plum Island, but not sort of in town. Um, and also, I mean, I think my concern with the units being owner occupied or not is more investment companies coming in and, you know, taking housing stock and using it for short term rentals more than the issue of are people going to cause a disturbance? Because I think you can deal with the disturbance issues through other means. Um, so I don't know, you know, what the solution is because they can, you know, an investor can buy things under different names, but yeah, I would like to see it restricted in some way, but I don't know that, I think only allowing investor owned properties on Plum Island is, um, the right answer.
Well, this goes back to, you know, the discussions that we've had over the months. Um, it's basically my understanding, if someone has a different one, please jump in. Um, this has traditionally been the way Plum Island has rented. And so we just wanted to exclude them from all the restrictions and just let them go on, do their thing like they've always done. But on the mainland, we have very different history. And we have tight neighborhoods and not so tight ones, but everybody's concerned, as Bob was pointing out, about having a a somewhat commercial activity going on next door. Um, and so that was the basis on which all of these, um, regulations and, you know, cuts of the three different kinds came from.
Yeah. Do we have data though on Plum Island's short term rentals versus?
Yeah, I, I, I know it exists because, um, the company that, um, counselor McCauley has brought in to talk about, um, doing all the third party monitoring and data collection and so on is called Granicus. And they, uh, came to a meeting with the city council middle of last, I guess it was last week on Wednesday, and they did a screenshot just for that day. And had, could show exactly where the rentals were from all of those platforms that they pulled in the information from, just for that one day. And at that point, there were a hundred unique rental units in the city. And they were clustered in the south end primarily and then out on, well, I don't, I don't remember looking at Plum Island. So I can't directly answer your question, but just to tell you that what I saw means that they can do that at any point in time and tell us exactly what's been rented. And that, and once and they compare that, then they will, I mean, there's a whole process for registration and monitoring and, and and taking care of complaints. Uh, but just to know that that kind of company is being looked at and has that kind of data for us. Um, Heather?
In terms of the concern of people from out of town, you know, being businesses and owning several properties, what if we said something where you could only own a short term rental if you're a resident? Because you are invested in this community and you're, you know, assumably not going to allow a ruckus in your short term rental. You know, because you're a Newburyport resident.
What do other people think about that idea?
I think that, the, the concern that, 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 that I have and, and the reason why I think the the, the primary residence is important and also that the owner be present uh, when the unit is rented is that they are then the first cut, uh, first line of dealing with any disturbance or any issues. And it, it doesn't fall to the neighbors. Uh, which, which it would if, even if the owner lived somewhere else in Newburyport and, and they were renting a property. But there was no one there who was responsible, uh, when that unit was being rented. And I realize if you're renting your whole house, that that's not the case, but, but if we're talking about the, the, the broader STRU market here, it, it places the burden on the neighbors if the owner is not invested and present in the operation of their STRU. It just naturally migrates to the neighbors and the neighbors are supposed to be not affected by this. So I, I, I just think it's really important that, that we limit it to, to that frame. Because otherwise you, you open it up to, to, you know, more issues for, for everybody.
Okay, um, Don?
I agree with Bob, and I would also just add the other difference I see is if you're uh, owner occupied, something happens, you see these neighbors, they get a day out. If you're on the other side of town or even four or five streets away, it's not the same degree of, of, uh, neighborhood, understanding, empathy, et cetera. Not that it's not the case, but, but I think there's just a natural tendency. Uh, if you're further away to have a little less caring than if you're literally right next to a neighbor whose complaints. That's it. Thanks.
Heather, do you want to respond in any way? I still see your hand up. Um, I'm sorry, guys, your hands end up staying up there. I don't know what's going on.
No, I took it down and I put it back up. Um, I'm trying to be respectful and walk the line here of the short term. But I don't see the difference between Bob's point. If there's a long term rental in a neighborhood and the owner lives in New York, who's monitoring that? I don't see the difference here. So I'm really having a hard time with this.
I think the fundamental difference I have with it, Heather, is that a long term renter is, is still part of the neighborhood. They're, they're known by the neighbors, uh, you know, that they, they are part of all of that. And sure, there, there are situations where that can be a problem, but you know, they, they are a long term resident in, in the neighborhood. There's a big difference between that and a, a weekend transient visitor, uh, who has no stake in the neighborhood, n- no knowledge of the neighbors, uh, just is, is there for, you know, the weekend. And I, I just think there's a big difference. And, and that, you know, we'll get to it later on, but it extends to parking as well. Uh, if, if you're part of the neighborhood, it's, to me, it's i- in an ideal world, it's kind of a self policing environment. If you have transient visitors in and out every single weekend, uh, it's much harder to control.
I guess I would feel more comfortable if I saw the data of the, the problems and the issues in the short term rentals versus problems within the city overall and problems with long term rentals. If we had a spreadsheet like that, I would feel much more comfortable, but I feel like this is all, it's, a lot of it's based on unknowns and it's on maybe a few personal experiences or some anecdotes, but I just don't feel like there's facts here that are leading us down this road of solutions.
I can understand why you feel that way, because when we started talking about this, there were very few problems. There were huge problems for the neighborhood, the four or five that we knew about at the time. But then when they started digging, counselors in particular started researching to see how many of these units were around town. They realized that there were many more out there than anyone ever thought of, which means to your point, they were quiet and there were no problems with it. However, um, that also represented a source of income that the city would like to take advantage of. And legally, these people are, were required to register with the state, even if they didn't register in the city, because we had no ordinance, um, zoning or general ordinance that would, um, control for it. Um, one of the, the, the major argument for going forward was to get ahead of the problem. Rather than wait until there were dozens and dozens of pieces of data that said, this is a problem and we need to fix it. Um, counselors were willing to discuss it and try to get some resolution to put an initial regulation in place to see how it worked, to quote whomever said it earlier, let's crawl before we walk or run. Something in place that would allow us to track what's going on. And oh, by the way, start legalizing and, um, taking in revenue for these, uh, units that were being rented anyway. So that's where it all came from. Um, I don't think you're ever going to get, you're going to get in the short term right now in time to make a decision on this ordinance and the accompanying licensing one. The kind of data that you want to have. Um, and we're trying to avoid it in the first place, so that we just don't have that list, long list of problems that have to be resolved.
Does the long with the problems actually exist? Or is it a few instances that have raised flags of concern is my, one of my.
We're not, we're not making the ordinance just to solve problems. We're, we're basically putting an ordinance in place to make it legal to rent these. And we've had people speak in public hearings. I don't know if it happened while you were listening, um, on the, on the public hearing, who said, yes, I do this. I have no problem with it. I'd be happy to have, I register with the state. I'd be happy to, to have, you know, whatever regulation you have in town that will allow me to continue to do this. Um, so there are plenty of people that would not have a problem with it. And that's what we hope all renter, uh, property owners would feel, um, that makes it legal. And, um, enforceable when there is a problem and brings in the revenue for the, for the city on the fees.
Bonnie, is there any possibility of grandfathering people in who can demonstrate that they've been doing this?
Oh, boy, you're the lawyer. I'm surprised you even suggested that. How would you ever do that?
Well, I mean.
Uh, this is Andy, it might be worth interjecting in there. I'd actually had a conversation, um, it might be Salem, I don't want to misquote, but I think it might be Salem. But actually, I was talking with the, the sponsor today about it. Um, but I believe they might have a provision wherein, um, if it's not Salem, it would be another community, but in a provision wherein operators of short term rental units who were in existence prior to the ordinance taking effect, uh, would be eligible to apply for a permit uh, to, to sort of secure or maintain that usage, um, subject to certain, you know, terms or restrictions or whatnot. Um, but as a mechanism by which to do that, uh, where it's a, may not meet the otherwise applicable criteria of the ordinance. But that's, that's not currently in the draft, uh, you know, at this time of the council.
Also, I think. Worth thinking about. I don't know. I mean, if people don't have any complaints and they've been doing this, it just seems.
Well, then they won't have any problem with.
Well, but they may not have an owner occupied unit.
Yeah.
Well, owner occupied is.
But if it's been going swimmingly and they haven't had any complaints and they haven't caused any of the problems in the neighborhood. I mean, I do think a lot of people use Airbnbs, you know, people want to come to Newburyport and they have a family of five and they want to stay somewhere downtown. And so they come in and they don't cause any problems and they eat at the restaurants and they go to the beach and they you know, do the same things they would do at a property on Plum Island, except it's downtown.
Yeah, I think, I think it was mentioned before though, that since it's not a legal activity currently, the traditional grandfathering doesn't really come into play. So as Andy said, you know, ma- maybe they would have to have some special provision if you wanted to grandfather that kind of activity.
Well, we can consider it definitely.
I, I think when you start entering an environment of making exceptions to the ordinance, either by grandfathering or, you know, exceptions to other criteria, it just opens up this whole thing to constant interpretation. And, you know, back to crawling before we walk, I think there needs to be a set of guidelines that, that we can establish the market around, uh, and then let it evolve from there. And, you know, the, the activity that has occurred to date, which has occurred outside of, of these requirements, because they didn't exist. If they can meet these requirements, then, then they can have a license to continue operating. If they can't meet these requirements, then I, I think creating exceptions really, really opens up this whole thing to a, a lot of chaos.
But I think you could put in a, exception and say, you know, they have to apply by a certain time. And if they don't submit the application and they're not approved by that time, then they're not grandfathered in. I mean, there can be dates, there can be cutoffs, there can be ways to do something more smoothly where, you know, we can't get ahead of the market with, the market has already started.
I think the, but I think the, the word grandfathered is what I'm having a problem with. I think if you've been operating and you can meet the criteria that is established by the zoning amendment, then you can continue to operate. If you can't meet that set of requirements, then, then there may not be a license to continue. But I, I think calling it grandfathered in is, is problematic, because it means then you have units that don't meet the requirements. And, and you have units that have gone through a review and a licensing process to do. And I think those kinds of differences create some real issues, I think, in the end.
Yeah, I, I disagree. I think that there's a way that it could be done that would make sense and would limit any exceptions and make it you know, I, I think this, if somebody is already set up doing this and they've been doing it successfully, to say now they can no longer do it is difficult.
So between the.
Technically, they've been doing it illegally, so.
Well, yeah, but I mean, everybody has, because there wasn't a provision in place.
So if we were to go with the exceptions and we set up the criteria, I would want to see those criteria relate to how it is being operated, not just you've been operating, you, you've got a, a fast track and you can get approved. That's not, that's assuming that, that, that you meet all the criteria. If you don't meet the criteria for what is being um, regulated in the zoning ordinance, for example, then what are the criteria that we're going to allow these people to be exceptions to the rule? See what I mean? It's not just timing of when you get your, your license or when you get your zoning determination. Let's just stick with zoning. So if you could come up with, um, criteria that would allow these pre-existing um, short term rentals that don't meet, say they're not owner, they're, they're investment properties, but would, um, regulate them in a way that would be consistent with the new applicants who have to meet the criteria and are owner occupied. Then I could see maybe we could do it, but it has, they have to be apples to apples in terms of how they get approved and regulated.
You're going to have a hundred and eighty eight, uh, grandfathered STRUs. Because everyone will apply to be grandfathered. You're going to have whatever exists for parking issues around those a hundred and eighty eight units. You're going to have whatever issues exist around the non-owner occupied aspect of it. And ba- basically by doing that, we haven't changed. And ba- basically by doing that, we haven't changed anything. You've got, you've got 188 units that are operating outside the rules that we have established. And, and I just don't see how that could possibly work.
Right. I mean, I think you could say that they need to meet the parking requirements if we feel that that is something that's extremely important. You know, there could be certain requirements that they still have to meet, but if they've been operating successfully with no complaints and they can demonstrate that they've been renting, you know, through bookings or whatever they have, whatever documentary evidence you have to show that you've been an Airbnb and that you haven't had any, you know, police complaints or noise complaints or whatnot. I think there should be some sort of an avenue. I haven't thought through it clearly, but
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. If you could, yeah, think about it, come up with some examples.
It's just a
Yeah, because if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna write it up that way as an option, then we need to have some examples of, of why it would, where it would make sense and where it wouldn't make sense.
Right.
So there'll be a little bit of time before the finalization of, of the results of tonight's discussion. If you want to add, add something on that to get it included. I'm trying to think of someone who hasn't talked recently. Rick.
Well, I've been thinking a lot, a lot of time. There's a lot of stuff going on here. I stopped typing a while ago. So I've, I've got four things I want to talk about, which are all things that people have, have discussed so far. And first of all, I want to circle back to Heather's question. I think it was Heather's question about whether we could allow investor owners who lived in Newburyport as opposed to investor owners who lived in New York City. And it's, it's an interesting idea because it, it implies that somebody who lives closer to the property will, will do better. But I think unfortunately, I think it runs afoul of kind of a fundamental principle of zoning, which is you treat all properties that are situated the same, in the same way. So you can't distinguish about what people can do based on where they live. It's just, it's, it's just something we can't do. So we've, in this ordinance, we've said, or the, the draft ordinance has said, it distinguishes an owner occupied property different than an investor owned property because that's something about the property. It's not something about, you know, the residence of the owner. So unfortunately, I don't think we can do that. The, the next thing is about this grandfathering, as I prefer to call it vesting. So as Andy mentioned, that something that was in, in effect or in use before the ordinance took effect would be vested from zoning changes and would be allowable under zoning. And I'm not sure that it, it, everybody understood that that meant before the city adopted zoning. Which, and I can't remember when that was. I asked Andy last week and he told me and I, I've forgotten already. But the, so many of the properties on Plum Island would have operated what we call short-term rental units before the city adopted zoning. Because that was just the character of Plum Island. Probably not too many in, on the mainland did that. So those could be vested. They would be vested from the zoning. They would still have to apply for a license and they would still have to, to to meet the licensing ordinances requirements, but they wouldn't have to meet the zoning ordinances requirements. So that's the second thing. The third thing is this issue and that I, I think Beth has been talking about. And what is generally called in zoning is amnesty. And yes, when cities adopt a new or start enforcing an ordinance that, or an ordinance or a lack of ordinance that existed, they often provide for an amnesty period for people to come into compliance with the ordinance. And it's typically actually been done with in-law apartments. Where, where, when a community starts to regulate in-law apartments and they know there are a bunch of illegal in-law apartments in the community, they give residents, you know, nine months or a year to, to come in and, and, and get amnesty and, and rather than start enforcing the ordinance against them. So that's something that, you know, we could consider for, especially for the mainland. And the final thing I want to say is, is just talking about the effect of licensing altogether. You know, when, when cities around the world start requiring people to register their short-term rental units, they find that they disappear. Just, just the requirement to, to register them disappears because it means, you know, it means paying taxes and it means getting inspected and all that kind of stuff. And they just don't want to deal with the hassle. So although we have 188 or so short-term rental units now, once the licensing ordinance gets adopted, a lot of those are just going to disappear. Not the ones on Plum Island and not some of the ones in, in the, you know, most, most attractive areas. But, you know, I think it's not going to be as big an issue as, as, as we fear. So that's, that's what I guess I would say is that, you know, we think about vesting on Plum Island, which is automatic. We don't have anything to do with it. That's, that's going to be a matter for the, for the licensing commission. And we could think about an amnesty provision to help people get, get regularized over a period of time rather than having them. And, and that was one of the issues that came up at a public hearing is what's going to happen with all these people who have leases already for, or rentals already arranged on Plum Island for this summer season? So we need to give, you know, maybe a year or so to, for an amnesty period. And I think that's, you know, a lot of it will take care of itself.
Isn't Plum Island fundamentally exempt from almost everything we're talking about?
No, it requires, it requires licensing.
Let's still licensing, yeah. But in terms of all of the other requirements, aren't they generally exempt?
Mostly, yes.
Yeah.
Good points, Rick. Thank you. Are we ready to move on to any of the other, the next topics about where the special permit issue? Or, or people's
Bonnie, this is, yeah. This is Don. Just I had my hand raised. I'm sorry. I, I just lowered it now. But I, I would just reiterate what you, you said, because I happen to agree with Bob with respect to grandfathering issues, et cetera, or whatever other term we want to use. But I, I think my sense is, and, and even what Heather raised earlier, I, I think the end result of our deliberations here is going to be recommendations. And I fully expect there's going to be perhaps something where it says, this is the, this is the recommendation by four members and three members said this or whatever. So whatever, whatever Heather or Beth or anyone else going forward wants to put in there, I, I would expect, I mean, that's my vision of what we're going to be doing. I don't think we're going to have seven or eight zero votes on all these and we're going to provide that some members thought differently is. And I, I hope that's the, that's what we're going to be doing. So I guess would underscore that Beth and, and Heather and others start to, you know, verbalize, you know, write down what they want to see in this, because this would be another opinion.
Yeah. And that's a good point because we need to have a rationale both for the majority opinion and for any other views that might differ from that. I'm looking back at some other times that we've worked with the city council and we haven't gotten any direction because we had however many people were on that committee. We had that many suggestions. So I want to give them a sense of direction from us and like you say, include other points of view, all of which should be as clearly stated as possible. And that'll, that'll hopefully let them know where we stand.
So are we typing up these comments separately from the meeting?
Any, well, we'll talk about how we're going to do the, the report at the end. Hang on to your ideas. They're not being, we're not throwing out minority views because they don't go along with the majority because there are kernels of good ideas in there that might get incorporated into the final ordinance. But I don't know how we're going to do that yet to answer your, your question, Heather. So hang on to it for now.
Okay.
It's a collaborative effort, but you know what a, what is it called? A committee that creates a report ends up looking like a camel instead of a horse. I don't know. We want to, we want to give them some direction, but we also want to give voice to all of our good ideas from whomever, you know, whether it's a majority or not. So moving along to the second question around special permits. We have been, we never, we initially said, let everything be permitted in every district that we thought it was appropriate. And then the city council came back with an amendment that we had never seen before and it was all special permits. And they got talked down from that by the zoning administrator, planning director and the zoning board of appeals. And they've come up with just two areas that they feel are historically and for, I don't know what other reasons, maybe other people remember why the two ridge ridge districts are are the only ones that require a special permit now. So is there anybody who wants to make an argument to go back to special permits? And if so, why? And where? Alden?
I, I was thinking more that go back to being permitted. I'm, I'm sort of wondering what's the criteria that they're going to be using in the special permit process and who's doing that? Is, is that are the differences that they're looking at, they're going to be more controlled by the licensing process rather than, than what's coming out of this?
No, this is zoning. This is where it's allowed. We're just talking about zoning. And so the, the recommendation now is a special permit in
It's the high street ones, right?
High Street, yeah, A and B. And the footnote says, the zoning board of appeal shall be the special permit granting authority for this use in accordance with section 5G. All STRU special permits shall lapse automatically. Oh, well, forget that. Anyway, whatever the criteria are that we use in in the ordinance, the zoning ordinance as it sits right now is what they will use. And can somebody help me? Cause I don't remember why they wanted to do those two.
Yeah, I, I don't either. I don't really see the
Do you know? Or even Andy?
I don't know.
Andy, do you know?
I am not able to answer that question definitively. I have to ask the sponsor.
All right. We will not make assumptions or talk about anything that we think is driving that. So everywhere else, it's either permitted or not permitted. And I think the open question was in the conservation district, it's not permitted. And there's still some board members, I believe, who are interested in opening that up. And if there are, would you speak now, please?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. Again, I don't see why we're, you know, penalizing those areas where there are houses and so forth to exclude them from, from being allowed to do this. You know, I don't, I, I don't, I don't understand it, you know, ba- basically since the city council's made a mistake and, and the zoning map and hasn't corrected it, that, that they're going to penalize these people?
Yeah. So you're talking about down along the river around
Yeah.
They're still zoned as conservation area.
And also up along Merrimack where it's the WMD or WMU sections. There's houses all along several of those that would be excluded as well. And so, so again, yeah, I, you know, I don't see the distinction.
Does anyone else have any comments on, on the conservation area being not permitted or permitted?
Yeah, I do. Bonnie, this is Don. I, I, I agree. I don't see any difference. In fact, I think some of the issues with respect to noise, even though it's more adjusted in the licensing side as well as parking. You know, I, I just perhaps, you know, other items associated with neighbors being too close. General, in general, they're, they're, they're more widely spaced in, including the high street. So I, I would, I would go so far as to say the conservation as well as high street and we'll wait next, next meeting for maybe there's something we're missing, but I'm not sure why they, those two areas would be treated any different than the other zoning districts.
And what about, as Alden suggested, WMD and a WMU?
Yeah, I guess so too. I could see that. Yeah, I was thinking more of the conservation. But yeah, he's right. There are some pockets in there that, that are there and again, generally in back of the WMD, if their houses are there generally back are just green, marinas that people are probably drinking on their boats, whatever, it's a whole hour tonight. So I guess I don't see too much of the issue there either.
Okay. Anyone else want to comment on this?
Yes. So I, I'd like to go back to Alden's initial comment about how we would make a special permit decision in the high street districts. I don't see it. It's not really clear that there's anything provided through the special permit other than a public hearing. And there's, you know, there's, the criteria are pretty clear. So it would be very difficult for the zoning board to deny a special permit within those districts. It almost just seems like like additional process for those properties. And I agree with Don that the, those properties and the, and the agricultural conservation pose less impact, neighborhood impact from a, an owner occupied short-term rental unit than someplace in the South End. So I think I would, I would be in favor of allowing short-term rental units by P instead of SP in the high street districts and then allowing them in three districts in the second bullet, the agricultural conservation, waterfront marine and waterfront mixed use. I think, I think it makes sense there and just let the, let it be dealt with through licensing.
All right. So we go back to our original, one of our earlier iterations, if not the original one that says permitted in all those areas as well for the P. Are there any reasons, if we flip it around, are there any reasons that a short-term rental unit in one of those areas would be detrimental to the, to the district? I mean, do we have to worry about tractor, tractors running over, you know, weekenders or I don't know, Marie, you know, the kinds of work that goes on in those districts being impacted or alternately impacting short-term renters? And I can't think of any, but I
In my view, no different than the, the people living in those houses.
Me too.
And areas.
Yeah. All right. So that's something we seem to agree on. As you, as you stated it, Rick, so you've got that one. Let's move on. The next one, oh, we handled both of them together. Permitting and special permitting and then districts. Let's move on to, do all three types of short-term rentals raise the same concerns? Or could some be permitted in a district while others require a special permit? Kind of a tag on to what we were just discussing.
To Bonnie, I, I was thinking about this and thinking about how actually, I'm, I'm gonna stop. It's mine for the next point on parking.
All right. Um, all right. Well, you've all been holding on for the last one, I know. So let's go for it. Parking. Do all three types of short-term rental units raise the same concerns about parking impacts or are some types of less concerned than others? So Rick, would you like to kick off this discussion?
I would. So my feeling about this is that, that there are differences among the different types of short-term rental units. And here's what I think. If you have a home share unit, which is a unit where you're in your house nine months out of the year and, and you rent it for somebody for a month or two or something like that. You know, you're there with your, your cars for most of the year and you go away and somebody else comes and is perhaps there with their cars. It doesn't seem like there's a chain and you're, you're renting to, likely to a family. I mean, you're not going, as a, as a homeowner, you're not likely to rent your house out as a, as a party house and then have to come back and deal with, with the mess. So my sense is on that home share, there's no impact in the neighborhood in terms of parking. Maybe a minimal impact, maybe somebody comes with another car, but it seems like it's a, a, a pretty much a wash. So I don't feel in the case of a home share that there needs to be additional parking required. And I'm sure people will argue against that. The second one is the limited, I'm sorry, the adjacent owner adjacent unit. Which again, you know, you're there, you're, you, this kind of gets to what. Heather has been saying about, is there a difference in the, is there qualitative difference in the impacts between? A long term and a short term rental? And again. I don't think so in that case. I, interestingly, I think that the case where there's most of a parking impact. Is when you rent out a room in your house. Because then you've got your, your cars and the people who are coming to visit you. So in that case, I could see. The, the requirement for. Adding additional parking spaces. Parking requirements per guest room leased. So, you know, I, I, I think that's, I, this may be a very much of a minority opinion. But I feel like there's not a parking impact. From the home share or the owner adjacent and there's potentially a parking impact from the limited. Unit.
Heather.
Okay, so. I, I don't think that short term rentals are the parking issue. I think that the parking issue is significant in Newburyport and it's single family homes. I've sold several homes that don't have driveways at all. I've sold homes where people opt not to use their driveway and they opt to park in the street because they want to put patio furniture in their driveway or entertain in their driveway. And there's plenty of long term rentals that have absolutely no parking. So to me, the parking issue is absolutely not short term rental. Because if you think about a neighborhood impact, if a short term rental is largely used on a weekend. Those cars that may be creating congestion are doing so Friday through Sunday. And then Monday through Thursday, that street's quiet again. The issue, which is far bigger in your report, is the long term rental in the single family homes. Again, I did call planning and I asked them if they had any data on driveway sides versus registered cars and they don't have any data on that. But just in my experience, I can tell you. That the parking issue is the residents who live here long term year round. So I don't see this parking as being a short term rental problem personally.
Don?
Sure. A couple of things.
I'm sorry, I called on Don?
Yeah, Don. Yeah.
Okay, I, 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 well, I think I can think of some exceptions with respect to home share. I, I agree with Rick. It. I think we have to follow the old ninety ten rule. We can't. Provide, you know, enough specificity to cover every situation, just as one of the folks in the public said, well, I've got. In my family, we only come in one car and therefore the parking that's currently proposed is, is, is a hindrance is. And conversely, I could put forth a case where. A guy and his girlfriend come separate car. So again, I, I think we've got to follow the ninety ten. So. If, if I subscribe to that logic, I, I agree with Rick on the home share. I, I need a little bit of extra time on the owner adjacent. Items there. So I've been looking forward to some other discussion on, on that. But again, I agree with you on the home share. On the, on the owner occupied or on the point that Heather makes. I, I do disagree and I do think there is a difference between long term rental unit and short term. A long term rental unit. If it's two or three bedrooms, they, they could be one family living there. Where if it's short term, the way we, way the word is written, you could have a person living there for each, for each of the bedrooms. And so I do think you will, you would exacerbate. I think the key is exacerbation of, of, of current parking. So I do, while I do see a difference and I surely. I'm not trying to promote a debate, Heather, between us, because I suspect neither of our points will, our views will, will change. But again, I, I do see that for the owner occupied. The ordinance is currently written and, and maybe there are some minor exceptions. I can't fi- figure out too many. Is, is, is adequate. I, I think when we hear people say, oh, we, 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 we live in an area where there's short term rentals and we don't have any issue. I have a feeling, if you could. If I generalize parking in three ways, if, if everyone has. Two lanes, you know. You know, po- parking. You know, they don't have many people around the street because they're going to park their two cars, assuming they have two cars in their driveway. I think you get, you get some issues where we use, you know, the, the tandem parking because as much as makes us feel good, I don't think that's. Some people follow it. Most people will put another car in the streets and so you don't have to move cars in and out. And, and as Heather correctly said, the big issue is in, on most of the area, at least in South End and portions of the North End where, where there is no parking. And to take a person that's even owned occupied. And they've got one or two cars and then it allows this owners, unless I'm mistaken, allows them on a short term. Basis to rent the other two bedrooms out. There's two additional cars there. So for that reason, I, I do think. You know, even the owner occupied, going back, it makes some sense to, to follow the ordinance. I guess those are my initial thoughts on it. Thanks.
Okay, Bob.
Thanks. Just, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in, in Rick's comments because if, if I'm remembering back. You know, Rick, you were, you were kind of in the middle of this parking discussion. Very early on and, you know, you know, one car per bedroom kind of matched up with. Rooming houses and, and, you know, other, other requirements in town. So. You know, I think, I think. That's where this discussion started for, for us, I think, you know, several months ago. I, I will say, you know, I, I. Completely agree with Heather that, that. Parking is a significant. Issue in Newburyport. It's a very significant issue in, in the South End where I live. And, and all of the situations that you described are what contribute to all of that. And, and for that reason, because parking is a challenge already. For that reason. You know, the, the potential for short term rental units to create more of a negative is very much there. I mean, if I have, if I have a three bedroom, short term rental unit, there's a potential that, that. On the weekend, there's three additional cars that are arriving in a neighborhood that's already challenged. And, and I just think. You know, we, we have to look at it from that point of view of no negative impact on, on a neighborhood that, that already has challenges. No further impacts. And, you know, that parking needs to be accommodated in some other way, other than to disrupt the, the existing parking that. Already, already is happening. And I will say again. You know, for me, there's a big difference between parking for a long term renter and parking for somebody who is visiting for the weekend. Long term renter is part of the neighborhood. They can kind of fit into the fabric of the neighborhood, fit into the parking scenarios that exist on the street. And the short term renters coming in are not plugged into any of that. And there's a potential for disruption and, you know, you see, you know, in, in the South End neighborhoods, you see cars, you know. Out of state license plates, you know, sometimes several times a week showing up. They have no stake in the neighborhood, no, no particular, you know, concern about any of those parking patterns. That exist and they're just there and sometimes it can be multiple cars. So. I think there's enough of a potential for it to be a negative. That we need to maintain the off street parking formula.
Heather.
One of the things that concerns me is these. Earlier on, we were on point one and I'm going to make this relevant. When we said that if we do not grandfather and we do not allow any preexisting, that the majority of these may shut down. And. I understand the, the not having stake in the neighborhood and I understand not having stake in the community. But one of my biggest concerns, quite honestly, is that we're going to be responsible. For shutting down essentially. One of the biggest variables that keeps our downtown going. And by these restrictions, where now we don't have hotels, we know some might be coming, but they're not here. And how do we put this responsibility on us to have these very, very strict rules that may? As it's been said, shut these down. And then what do we do going forward? I mean, we're going to directly impact the economy of Newburyport. If we can't bring tourists in because we need tourists.
So could I just try a variation on the theme of Rick's third example that might? Allow more of these to be. Approved. On the zoning side. That's the limited share. Where right now we're requiring one space per bedroom and. The limited share can rent up to three bedrooms at a time. I'll use my house as an example. Again, in the South End, I have one off street parking space. And I'm very proud to admit is a garage. But that's all I have. The family that lived before, lived here before me. Obviously had two cars and that's, that's allowed. So whether they use the garage or not, I don't know, but you know, most people. Need two parking spaces for their, their home. So here's what I'm wondering. Could we set it up so that? In my example. I am not using one of my on street. I know this sounds weird. Spaces. Because I would have to if I were living with someone who had a second car at my house. So. And again, the software that Granicus talked to us about, they can. Detail all of this stuff. So don't worry about how it would get monitored. It would be part of the application and it would go into the system for, for twenty one Smith Street. So I have three bedrooms. That means that I could rent one of those bedrooms. And use my. My one on street parking space. For that rental and I wouldn't be creating any more. Impact on the neighborhood. Because I could be a couple and already using that spot. Does this making sense? So there, there's an exception. If I'm not using all of the spaces that are allotted to me on the street. Could I, could we work into the parking regulation for limited share? That that property. Which has three eligible bedrooms. Could rent one. And use that one on street parking space. To meet their parking requirement.
So Bonnie, if I, if I may, that's a great point, but how do we? How do we? Know that Bonnie has only one car, that she's not a car collector? Or Bonnie has a live in boyfriend or something? How do we know that?
Because I have to fill out. An application and register my one bedroom as a short term rental. And it is listed that way. And, you know, if, yeah.
But you said you have only one car. Who's to say that you, again, who's to say that you can't? Remarry and, and you're, you've got two cars again or something. I, I don't know.
Then I'm in violation of my, my. Zoning determination in my license. Because I came in saying that I had only one car and I had one bedroom that I wanted to rent out.
So, so you bring it in. So I think it's, 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 if I understand that correctly, one of the things you're saying, perhaps one way we could slice this. From a parking is to have some flexibility in the zoning, which. If, if you, if you have that flexibility, you have to be permitted by the licensing board. And so we would have. Additional parking requirements in the licensing ordinance. Is that what you're saying?
No, it would, I don't, if there's no parking requirement in the licensing ordinance now, we don't need it. It would be picked up in the zoning. Because remember, you have to get a zoning determination before you can go to. And, and actually you're going to be filling out, if it's all automated, you'll be filling out both. Applications at the same time. But the zoning. Determination has to come before your license can be approved.
Right.
And I'm controlled. I'm controlled. My, my license will be controlled by the fact that although I have. Well, one bedroom I sleep in, I have two possible rentals. I am only allowed to rent one of them.
And, and how do we know if that changes? How do we know if that changes?
I have to be honest. My neighbors figure it out. I mean, however, these things get done, anything could happen on any of the applications where things change. It would be the same process.
Right. So I'm sorry, I'm looking through the ordinance stats, you know, the last one that was in February. Then Andy had marked up. Where exactly is, is? When you, for the zone, where does it provide some type of a, a time period for this or basically? Where does it say this? There's no time period. So basically.
These are annual. At the right now, I think they're all annual and that's one of the things we thought for discussion, if I'm not mistaken. I, somebody can correct me on that if I'm wrong. I don't want to.
That's correct. The licensing is yearly, but then there is some debate still maybe about that ongoing.
So, but, but that's the licensing. So if the licensing is, help me understand, I guess I'm confused now. Folks, if the licensing is, is where we're talking about annual. Aren't we going to put something in the licensing that says that you parking would be allowed? You know, one additional, you could have one unit as long as the person has only one car or something. I'm just trying to understand, how do you? How do you do what you just said, which seems to make some sense, Bonnie?
So there's, there's a, excuse me, there's, there's a three year limit on the, on the zoning special permit or. Permit right now, I guess, but the, for the special permits. But the, you can't put parking in the, in the licensing ordinance. Licensing has to be in zoning. I mean, parking has to be in zoning. Just, it's one of those things that's been decided by a court case in Barnstable. So we're stuck.
There's no special permit. If it's by primitive rule, have you brought this point up enough? Aren't you going to be getting grandfathered forever once this is given?
No, it's three year, it's a three year zoning determination. So someone will look at it for zoning after every three years. The way it's set up right now. And so if I want to lie in three years' time. That's on me.
The, the current draft we say have says that the approval of the zoning approval. And I'm, you know, this is all. Subject to change, obviously, but the special permits are three years, but the zoning approval is annual.
Oh.
The topic page, topic page two. So the, so you really have to deal with the parking in the. In the zoning piece.
It's annual.
Yep.
Yeah, it should be clarified just there as a reminder for folks that there's a. Relationship between these two ordinances and the assumption is that the licensing ordinance would be tweaked to parallel any adjustments are done in the zoning. Prior to adoption by the council. So if there's any cross referencing or, you know, and, and as also as a reminder that there's the assumption here that the licensing commission. Is essentially coordinating with our office and the zoning administrator to verify the zoning compliance. And you have to have both of these checkboxes in order to have a valid short term rental unit generally.
Okay, let's move on to some other voices.
Hi.
Is your, yeah, okay.
Just curious about Bonnie, your. Your thoughts about. One allotted parking space on the street. Which. I guess I'm not familiar with, with, with how that works, but I. To me, the, the, again, in the South End, the, the, the streets are like the free market and people are, you know, parking wherever they can. And the, the fundamental question is whether or not. Short term rental units with a potential for. Multiple bedrooms with a potential for multiple cars, whether that. Disrupts that free market parking pattern that is established by, by the, the neighborhood. So. I don't, I don't know that anybody's entitled to. You know, in your situation, one, one off street space and, and one. Space on the street. That's, that's where the free market comes in. But I mean, the question is whether or not, you know, that the, the existing parking problem. Is exacerbated significantly by, by, you know, short term rental units. I, I. Think Rick's point about renting your entire house. And that having no impact on parking, you know, I hadn't really thought of that, but it's, you're absolutely right about that. But I think the other two rental unit types have a potential. And if we're, if we're talking about zoning to kind of address the. The worst case scenario, they, they have a potential for exacerbating an already problematic on street parking environment in, in town. So anyway, that's, that, that's it.
Alden?
Yeah, I was gonna just talk on that, on that same point. I, I'm. Never got the, uh. The notion that there were, that where you were entitled to a space on the street. So I think.
Well, the part, let me just clarify that. My understanding is that. For existing, um, structures in dense neighborhoods. The parking where you don't have any off-street parking. And that's purely, you know, that's, doesn't matter what you do with your off-street parking. If you choose not to park in your driveway tandem. That's your choice, but that's where you're supposed to be parking. For those people who literally have no. Off-street parking. It is. I don't know what the term is, but it's accepted that they are going to park on the street because where else are they going to park? And it has been accepted that there would be two parking spaces. Per house. Now I may not be saying this as clearly as it should be, and if Andy's listening, I hope he'll clarify it. But that was the basis on which I made my suggestion.
Yeah. And again, I, I, I know there, there are situations like that near me and I just don't, I, I wouldn't expect that those people would. See a car parked in front of their houses and say, you have to go move your car because this is my entitled space.
No, it's not meant to be that way. You park anywhere on the street you can.
Right. And so, so there's no entitlement, park anywhere. And if there's no space, you go further. It's not so that, that to me doesn't strike of any. You know, entitled allocation of, of space.
No, I was, I, I agree with you. Uh, yeah, I agree with you except that, and I think. That, um, there is. This impact on the neighborhood. There wouldn't be any additional impact on the neighborhood if I were two people living here with two cars. Versus if I'm one person here, living with one car off-street and rent out a bedroom and have another car. Irregularly parked in front of my house or somewhere else on the street.
Right. No, I see what you're saying. I just don't, this, just the notion of. You know, entitled and being allocated or whatever.
It's the wrong way of saying it. I don't know how to say that, but it's the, the concept I'm trying to get across. If it would help. To alleviate, um, this idea that one parking per bedroom is going to wipe out so many. Um, opportunities for people to rent. And I'm trying to open that up as much as I can with this idea.
Right. I mean, for us, the, the, the whole thing is there since we're requiring one parking space per bedroom. What you're saying is we could ease that restriction. Because. Because people that live there are going to park on the street. So, so are, are short-term rentals going to park on the street. I mean, basically that's a thing.
Yeah, I think that you've said it very well. I think what I want to do is relieve. The restriction, but not eliminate. Uh, one parking space per bedroom. Jamie.
So one thing I can offer here is the perspective of a ZBA member formally living with these and trying to. Determine this criteria, like the way I'm reading the December ordinance, I'm looking at the correct one. I was looking at the incorrect one before. Uh, you'd have to have no fewer than one in addition to what's required. So if you had one of these non-conforming. Situations. You're never going to get to that one extra. So you're going to be disqualified on that basis, the way it's currently written.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why we have to rethink it. If we want to liberalize the, the parking restriction, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think as written, the ZB would have no choice but to decline a lot of applications in, you know, in town. That I'm familiar with.
Well, we're not going to go special permit because ZBA doesn't want to have to go through all that. So. That's, that's all, that's.
Okay, well, that's.
But it's a good perspective. Absolutely. Yeah. Um, Bob?
I. I would just spin this one, one other way for the sake of discussion that in. You know, in, in the South End, I guess that would be the, you know, our one and our two neighborhoods. Uh, commercial uses are not allowed. Um, if commercial uses were allowed. You would be required to have off-street parking for commercial uses. And, you know, getting back to. One of my earlier comments, I think, you know, the STRU marketplace is, is feeling more and more. Commercial. To me in terms of, of how it is operating in, in the city. So it, it generates cars. I mean. Think, think also about the fact that, that even if these ordinances are in place. In some form, there's nothing that caps the number of short-term rental units in a neighborhood. Um, that there, there could be quite a number of, of units surrounding you and they could all generate multiple cars on the street. And it could create quite an impact. So this is, this is a market driven, driven by tourism, driven, driven by the local economy. Uh, supported by local businesses that, that are involved in, in real estate and, you know, it will have a tendency to expand. And, and to me, that, that makes it more and more. You know, a kind of commercial enterprise. And those kinds of things are specifically excluded in these neighborhoods by zoning right now. And, you know, the. I think we need to be careful about the parking requirement because it's, these are not going to be isolated situations. These are, these are going to be, you know. Woven into the fabric of neighborhoods. You're going to have quite a number of STRUs in particular areas. And, and it has a potential for creating a significant problem in terms of parking. So I, I think we really need to think about it in those terms.
Jamie, your hand's still up. Do you want to speak again?
Apologies, I forgot to lower.
Okay. Any other brilliant thoughts at quarter to ten? Or not so brilliant thoughts? Any musings?
I have a non-brilliant thought.
Great, let's have it.
I just would like to say that. Going forward, however this breaks down and whatever it becomes. I wouldn't weigh too heavy on the concern of so many short-term rentals are going to. Come into our marketplace because our property values are so high that the numbers just aren't going to work. It's going to be hard for people going forward. To buy a property anyways and to make the rental money that they would want to make. Um, there was a property, it's on the market right now on Boardman. It was a short-term rental. And it has no driveway. It has four bedrooms and it's on the market for seven fifty. You couldn't buy that and, and cover. The mortgage and profit in a way that was meaningful. So I don't think going forward that this is going to be this. You know, explosion of problems because our property values are not going to go down.
Good perspective from a Realtor. Thank you. Don?
Yes. Um, a couple of things with respect to the, the purposes, uh, going back, I. Unfortunately, and I agree there, it's important to have a vibrant downtown district, but if you take a look at the purposes. Nowhere does it mention anything about downtown. So if that's something that we think is important, perhaps that's, uh, something we should put in. Uh, I'd also, again, going back to the parking and I don't know, I think Bob and I are at least are in lock stop, perhaps others. But if you, again, you take a look at the purposes, and I think to me, the rest of the verbiage of the ordinance. Follows the, the purpose, very similar to a mission stated in a corporation. And it talks about it's to ensure that potential negative impacts used to residential properties, et cetera, including traffic, et cetera, are mitigated. To avoid adverse impacts on the overall neighborhood character or property values. Now I will say it uses the word mitigate. It doesn't say eliminate. And so as much as I argue that I, I think the parking. Uh, is, is appropriate for the. Um, for, except for the home share unit, uh, I, I will admit that. The purpose of the ordinance seems to provide some leeway. It doesn't say eliminate or it does not exacerbate. It simply says mitigate. So, um, I, I will admit I'm somewhat conflicted. By the, the purpose. And, and so when, when I, I think I would, if I had my trouble, I would probably change the purpose a little bit and say, not mitigate, but does not exacerbate because. Uh, I, I'm, I'm for the parking requirements. And I do agree unequivocally that the. By if we adopted this, there will be less short-term rental, licensed, short-term renting. Will, will they be off the books? I, I suspect it will be. But I will agree, we'll eliminate most of the short-term rental units because it cannot meet. The requirements that we stand for parking right now. Thanks, Bonnie.
So going with the idea of mitigation. I guess back to my example, forget about, you know, allocating some. Can. Technically used on-street parking for my second car that I don't have. Um, I would go with something and I don't know what the answer is, but somehow relieve the restriction. The restrictiveness of one space per bedroom. On the, um, limited share. And it could be arbitrary. It could be, you know, one out of three, you know, one parking space for any number of bedrooms. Or I don't know. I'm just throwing that out. But I do. I, I hear everybody talking about how restrictive it is and how. Many of the short-term rentals legal or not right now, all of them are illegal actually. But, um, even if they're registered with the state. In neighborhoods or for units that have no off-street parking or no have, don't have enough off-street parking. To accommodate the short-term rental cars. Um, needs some sort of relief. Um. And I'm getting, and more we talk about, I'm getting less and less. Um, comfortable with this one parking space per bedroom on the. Limited share. And I'm surprised I'm saying it, but that's where I'm moving. And if anybody has any suggestions as to how to do that, so that we can balance out. The negative, not having a negative or. Not increasing. The, the negative impact on the neighborhood and still allowing for a short-term rental. To have parking on the street. I'd sure like to know what that answer is.
I was wondering, do you, do you eliminate the requirement for the parking space for the first bedroom and then say? You need a parking space for the second off-street. Um, to, to alleviate that or, or some combination, some, you know, uh, different multiple. Be, to be used.
So what you're saying is if I have two for rent and I only rent one of them, I get. Uh, I get a free pass.
Right.
If I had to rent both of them at the same time. The second one must have off-street parking.
Right.
It was a problem. Yeah, but then I'd have off-street parking for the first one.
Right. Well, yeah.
I don't know how that works.
Yeah, it, it would come into play that any one-bedroom places wouldn't have to worry about providing off-street parking. As well essentially, but if you have multiple bedrooms, then, then the fact that you have them, not whether they're rented or not. You would have to require an off, off-street parking.
You have to flip it around the other way and say you need to provide off-street parking up to a certain number of bedrooms. And then any, any overflow. Uh, could potentially be on the street. I'm not necessarily in favor of that, but I think you have to start with, you need to provide off-street parking. Uh, at a certain level. So if you only rent one bedroom on a weekend, that one car is parked off the street. If you rent three bedrooms and you only have space for a couple of cars and, and three cars show up. Uh, maybe one of those cars parks on the street. Um, again, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that, but I think. If, if there's a compromise formula, it's. It's to start with off-street parking and let, you know, those, those occasional moments when overflow happens. Let that be the moment where cars end up on the street. But again, then it becomes a monitoring situation for the neighborhood and the neighbors and, you know, then they're involved again. So. Um, that's the challenge.
Yeah, but I, I think the objective piece is the providing the off-street parking. Um, requirement, period. So. That, you know, for some, for example, in the South End, that's to me is going to be the difficult part.
Yeah, it sounds like it's all or nothing. I don't know. Rick?
So I, I guess what I was going to suggest, and I think it's maybe. A, um. A twist of what you were saying, Bonnie. Is to, and, and this may be the opposite of what Bob's saying. I'm not really sure. Um, but to really define two levels of, of limited share. And a limited share where only one bedroom is available for rent. Would not be required to provide an additional parking space. But a limited share where more than one bedroom is available for rent. Would be required to provide. Um, and what I was going to suggest was. One parking space per two bedrooms rented. So that a, a two-bedroom one would be required to provide one. Which is one more than the, than the one-bedroom one. And a three-bedroom rental would be required to provide two. So it's, it's, it's kind of, it's, is getting at it by defining it as a different use and saying that, that a, a, um, a short-term rental. A license, a short-term rental is licensed for only one guest room. Doesn't have to provide the additional parking space, but anything else does, but it wouldn't be on a one-to-one basis.
Yeah, I like that a lot.
Yeah, I think that gets to the point of what I was trying to aim for. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's not, it's not. You know, it's having some impact on the neighborhood, but not as bad as if all of them were on the street.
Rick, what you're saying is the, the worst-case scenario. Is there's, there's one car on the street related to the. Short-term rental unit. Is that how I? Interpret that. If you have, if you have one bedroom, you're not required off-street, so that car can park on the street. If you have two bedrooms, you've got to provide one space off-street and the second bedroom can park on-street. And three bedrooms, two off-street spaces and one car can park on-street.
Right. And I, and I don't think, and I think that that's assuming that every bedroom is occupied by, by a driver. Yeah, which is not, which is not usually the case.
Which can be the worst-case scenario. Now, is that, is that in addition to the owner parking off-street as well?
It's an addition. Well, so the way the ordinance is, is right now, and I.
It's in addition to the owner, right?
Well, the, the way that the, the thought, the way we left it last time was that. An owner. If an owner complies with the zone. So if, if an owner has two off-street parking spaces, which is a complying property. Then, um, then you'd have to have an additional space on, you know, for that second bedroom. Um. But we're also talking about, I believe, vesting non, non-conforming usage. So if a homeowner has a. One-car driveway. Then they're still vested to have that, that, to be non-conforming for one space. We're not asking them to provide that space plus the guest space. And I don't know, uh, I think from, from the last notes, it seemed like, uh, we were going to be writing that up, but that hasn't been, Andy's. That hasn't been drafted yet, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, but we talked about that last time.
I think that's generally agreed.
Yeah.
Can we just revisit the vesting one more time quickly? I thought what you said was you're vested if you were operating. Prior to there being zoning in the city.
It's a different vesting. So that would, that would be vesting, that would be vesting if you had a short-term rental unit in nineteen fifty-six or whenever. Whenever we, I can't remember when we got to.
Right, right.
No, but this is vesting, you know, we have tons of people in the South End particularly. Who are non-conforming to zoning, right? They, there's a house with no parking spaces.
Right.
Uh, because that's the way the city was built. Um, and so what we're, what this would say. Is I put, we talked about last time. Uh, or somebody talked about last time was, uh, not making those people, if, if somebody wanted to rent out. A short-term, a, a, um, a bedroom in their house as a short-term rental. And they didn't have any parking spaces right now, we wouldn't be requiring to put in three parking spaces. We'd only require them to put in the one for the guest room. Because that's the only thing that's making anything worse. Other, otherwise it would be impossible to do any short-term rental in the, in the, uh, in the South End probably.
That would mean.
That would mean a not more substantially detrimental criteria, which is,
Exactly. Right. But it's a vest, it's vesting you, because the way, the way it was originally written in the ordinance was one per guest room in addition to that required for the residential use. And so that would be three, right? So we want to say, but, you know, we were still vesting you from your non-compliance, your non-conformance.
So whatever you're vested as, you still need to provide off-street what's required for the short-term rental unit. That's what you're saying. Yeah, okay, okay.
I guess we do have to state that, because I was assuming everybody knew that. So that's important is the ground we're starting from.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So Rick, one more time. So soon you have a house, no parking, one, he has one, is two bedrooms. So the person, again, there's no parking, no driveway, et cetera. You rent out one of the bedrooms. Does that one bedroom have to have off-street parking? So the way that I just proposed it, it would not. That's what I thought. So basically, it's the same as the, or is minus one, if you said number of spaces excluding the grandfather part, we just discussed, if you didn't have anything, so it's, it's basically, if you had, if you had three bedrooms, you need to have two off, if you rent out two bedrooms, you have to have two off-street parking. Independent of whether the owner occupied is there or not. I guess, I guess, no, it has to be occupied. You can't move out. So if you have a three-bedroom house, the owner occupied, you can never rent, you can't, you cannot, you can only rent out two-bedroom units, correct?
Yeah.
A three-bedroom house, no driveway, the maximum number of rental units, it's really a question, is two, right?
Yep.
And with that two units, what you're saying, they would only need, and if they rented out both, they would only need to have one off-street parking.
One off-street, one on-street.
One on-street, in addition to whatever number of cars they have right now, that's irrelevant. Okay. So just try to be sure I understand it, Rick. Thank you. One off-street, right, yeah.
But of course, in that definition, if you literally have no off-street parking for yourself, there's no way you're going to be able to provide it for your one-bedroom rental or your two-bedroom rental with one.
Yeah, you would do, you couldn't, you couldn't rent out two bedrooms. You can only rent out one bedroom.
They're allowed to park on the street.
Yeah, so you get one, one, one free pass, Bonnie. I thought you said you get one free pass in the short-term rental units.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Just try to clarify. Just be sure of my mind. Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Bonnie.
I want to know, is, is it totally off the, out of the discussion, because I wasn't there at the last meeting, to make an agreement with somebody else who does have a parking space that, around the corner, where my short-term rental people could park? Is that buried somewhere in here or not? Part of the ordinance yet, or not going to be part of it?
It's not part of the ordinance.
No, it's not. Was there any discussion of that?
I think,
Bonnie, I'm sorry, get Bob.
I, there hasn't been any discussion recently about it. But, but I think the issue with that is just human nature, that if, if a renter pulls up in front of their unit and there's a parking space on the street, they're going to park there, they're not going to drive down the block and park somewhere else necessarily. So I think that, that was the discussion a few months ago when, when we took the off-street, but also off-site language out of this, that it just, it wasn't going to work. And then it would fall back to the neighborhood again to police the situation. And you would be constantly calling the police, saying there's a car parked illegally on the street again. So that's why we stayed with just, just onsite and off-street parking as the formula.
So it wasn't assumed that somebody had a situation like yours with literally across the street from you, there is an unused parking, off-street parking place that she could conceivably rent to you for your one-bedroom rental of a short-term nature. I mean, that one's right there, but there probably aren't very many of those around. So it's not a good example, I suppose. Yeah. Okay. Jamie?
There are, there are already, you may know this, but there are already two provisions in the ordinance that allow for off-site parking to satisfy the requirement. One is if you're within 300 feet of a municipal parking lot or garage. The other one is, I can't remember the exact terms, but if you have a lease within something, within certain requirements.
That's for the downtown district only. And right now, we're not even allowing it there, but we are proposing that it be allowed. Oh, yes, it is permitted. B1, 2, and 3. Yeah. So it's just downtown. It doesn't affect anybody farther away from those municipal parking areas. But you're right. All right. We've been all over the place and different people have been taking notes, I'm sure, on what they want to say for their point of view. And in general, Rick's probably been taking notes up to a point anyway. I'm wondering, what's our deadline on having to submit this recommendation? Do we have another meeting that we could have more focused discussion on it?
Generally speaking, I would say you could probably sort of get away with one more meeting, but the council is trying to meet the 90-day deadline for action with the close of the public hearing. So I would certainly suggest no longer than the next meeting that you have, just because the council typically has to do its process. And that involves a couple of committees and then their formal action for first and second readings for adoption. So that, you know, the sooner you're able to get comments or recommendations of whatever nature to the the council, the more helpful that will be to their timeline.
Well, the problem being that even if Rick were able to draft something from this and he could just put all his notes in some order with help from the rest of us who would submit things to him, it would be a very draft document. And I know they're eager, because I've had a request from the sponsor, where do you think the planning board's going to be going? And I said, beats me. So I know they're very eager for our response. I am reticent to give them what would effectively be a rough draft of notes from tonight.
Understood. Yeah, I know. That's, that's definitely appreciated. And, you know, and quite honestly, you know, as you know, the council doesn't necessarily, you don't necessarily have to provide a recommendation to the council, you know, and they could certainly proceed. You know, if they wanted to, after a period of time, to adopt regardless of whether or not there's specific recommendations. And of course, they can go to a different route, you know, than your recommendation. But, but again, the earlier we're able to do that, the easier it will be for the sponsor to coordinate any further edits or changes with, not only on his end, but also with the rest of the counselors who, as you know, there's sort of varied opinions about the particulars involved here. And that's partly why it's taken too long to come to something that has reached consensus.
I, with reticence, make a suggestion that we have a special meeting on this before our next meeting in order to expedite sending what we would be more comfortable with sharing to the council. Anybody have any comments on that?
So Bonnie, that would be fine with me if we can find a date that works. What I was going to suggest was that I could, I have enough information here, I think. I could draft something that had, for each of these points, have, you know, maybe two or three different recommendations. And we could just, you know, discuss them as, as part of that. So if I were able to put together a, an outline, it's not even a draft recommendation, but it's an outline of how we could, the different types of points we could come to, the different ways to look at parking, the different ways to look at special permit versus, you know, permit and so forth. That might help people and they could say, I like 2A and 3B or something like that. And we could, you know, maybe have a, at the next, be ready at the next meeting to have a straw poll of, of, you know, where we're going with this.
Well, our next meeting is three weeks away, and I think that's a very long time to ask the council to wait for our recommendations. How, how soon could you do that? And would people, then, how, when would, would people be willing to have a special meeting just on those notes? To come up with something more concrete that we could pass on to them sooner than April, whatever their first meeting is in April. April 6th, I think it is. Yeah.
I think it's going to be rainy on Saturday, so.
And you won't be bicycling.
Right. So I think I'll be, I, I think I could do it pretty quick.
Folks, how do you feel about having a special meeting next week? And are you, let me just ask one question. Rick, are you still restricted to not to other Wednesdays?
That Wednesday I have free, that Wednesday and the 31st. I got both of those free, the 23rd and whatever it is.
30.
I cut off somebody else. I'm terribly sorry. Somebody else was going to say something about next week?
Oh, I know. I'm away and I get back late Tuesday nights. The 23rd is fine.
Oh, great.
This is Don. I've got a CPC meeting, so if you're unavailable, I can do the 30th, but, yes.
What about the 23rd?
Yeah, the CPC meeting's on the 23rd. I can make the 30th and not the 23rd.
I can't do the 23rd either.
What time is your, your meeting on the 23rd?
Seven. It's a pretty long one, because this is when we go over all the applications for money.
Beth, are you out of town on the 23rd or is that night just tight, tight?
I am tied up between six and eight.
Oh darn, I was just going to suggest six o'clock.
What about the 24th?
I'm okay.
I can't do the 24th. I, my week next week is crazy, but if everybody else, I mean.
And Bonnie, sitting here, if the 23rd works for everyone else, I'm okay. I'm very happy to send my comments to Rick.
Well, we've already got two, two of you that can't make it on the 23rd, so now we're looking at the 24th, which would only affect Beth. And you couldn't do it earlier, Beth, like at six?
No.
Okay, fine. I don't want to interfere with whatever you're doing.
What about the 28th, 29th?
I want to do it sooner rather than later, which means next week, because we're under, I'm not saying we're under pressure, but I just know that Jim McCauley is very anxious to get this from us. So if we could do it on the 24th with Beth's,
This is Andy, just to let you know that we would not be able to do your meeting on the 24th if it's overlapping the seven o'clock historical commission meeting.
Well, there are two possibilities. One is we could do it earlier. The other is we can do it in person. And and then you wouldn't have to be there.
Yep, that's true.
We just have it. I mean, we'll, we'd have to announce it right now.
Yeah, we can post that meeting 40 hours in advance. Yeah, so as long as we know, we can see, confirm what room, whether you're here at City Hall or the Senior Center, either way, we can, we can confirm that, but, yeah.
I'm out of town. I could call in, but I'm out of town.
On the 24th?
Yeah, 23rd, 24th, 25th, 26th, through the first.
Six o'clock. Can we do a Zoom meeting at six o'clock on the 24th for an hour?
We certainly could. My, my one caveat with that would be, I have experienced, sometime, some months ago, I experienced one meeting in which folks didn't close the loop within the hour and we ran into a snag where the other board was waiting. So we didn't, I just hope we don't run into that scenario if you want to do it within the hour and it can work. That's, that's perfectly fine with us, but.
What about a start time at 5:30 on the 24th?
Certainly better, just to avoid any conflict.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Can do that.
You too.
Okay.
30.
5:30 on the 24th Zoom.
Okay, we'll get it, we'll get it posted. I assume that'll be the only,
Go on a diet that night and not eat dinner.
Yeah. And I, sorry, I assumed chair that that'll be the only agenda item for that night.
Yeah, it's a special meeting and it needs to be posted. And we'll come in on our panelist invitation as usual, just like a regular meeting. And in the meantime, if you, if you want to clarify anything you said, but not add any new information, you're allowed to submit that to Rick to make sure that he's got the thoughts clear in the draft notes from tonight. We're going to call them draft notes for review on the 24th. Andy, would that be okay procedurally?
Yeah, I don't, like you said, as long as it's not the new deliberation, you know, if you will, sort of just documenting or moralizing information that's already been exchanged, that should be fine. We can have the meeting posted and obviously we would have a sort of a hard stop, if you will, a minute or two before seven, just so we don't interrupt the historical commissions meeting.
Fine. So Rick, your deadline is Friday, right? End of the day on Friday, if anyone wants to get comments to you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Good. All right. Thank you, everybody, on that one.
I'm going to hear something.
Yes.
What do, because I'm leaving in the morning and I'm not going to be back till next Tuesday. So what are you, what are we sending to Rick? Like, our thoughts from this evening, like my personal thoughts for him to wrap into one document? Or am I keeping those to myself till next week?
Okay, you, Rick, you do it, because you're, you're,
So I was, what I was going to do is I was going to try to capture various points of view on each of these points and, and just kind of make them crisp so that we can understand and choose among them. So I think what Bonnie was looking for is if you think that there's anything that you, I don't want everything you, that you said tonight, because I tried to capture a lot of what everybody said. But if there's anything that you feel may not have been clear and you really want to clarify before I write down these summaries, send them to me. But you don't, nobody has to send me anything. So if you feel like, like there's something that you may have been misinterpreted on or something like that, then you can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on. I'd like a, a motion to approve minutes as amended for March 2nd.
So move.
Motion. Sorry, go ahead, Rick. I'll second, whatever.
Great. We got Rick and then Beth seconds. And I said is amended because I know there have been some minor modifications or whatever we call them, edits from the three of us. Does anybody else have any other comments on the minutes you'd like to have incorporated into the final version?
Bonnie, it's Don. I made a comment and I sent it to Linda with a copy to Beth. So, and I don't think it's material, just a clarifying point.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anybody else?
I sent in some comments to Linda.
Perfect. And they were, they were not substantive that you need to share with us right now?
Right. It was just clarifying the audio, audio intelligible section.
Right. Yeah, she can use that help. Okay, so with the motion and having it seconded, for approval of the minutes, I'll call roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
No, you have to abstain. I was testing you.
I'm staying.
Heather? Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So those are approved. The only update I have is going to be backed up with Andy's comments. We are going toward an in-person meeting at the Senior Center at the earliest possible time. And Andy will tell us when that is going to happen. It's obviously not for a special meeting, but I'm wondering if it'll be possible for April 6th.
Yeah, I think it's probably more likely to be the 20th of April. I will see if that's possible to do on the 6th, but it is more likely to be the April 20th meeting, which is the following one you have.
All right, you'll let us know when the staff,
That's right. Yeah, I will circle back with, with you and the whole board to look to confirm. And just to make sure everybody's clear about, at that point, you'd be going to physically have to get yourself somewhere at seven o'clock. So we want to make sure you know where to go, because it may be the Senior Center, in fact, as opposed to the Council Chambers, as we had previously been meeting it, so.
So quick question, is it a hybrid meeting or is it in-person? The reason I ask is, let's say someone, with these variables, you start to get some symptoms, you don't want to pass it. You would then just, what would you do? Just dial in by phone or how are you handling that? Or we'll control that when we get to it.
We have purchased, just in summary, we have purchased some so-called owl cameras at the council, same camera, or same devices the council has been using, which is a camera microphone device. It allows us to integrate with Zoom a little better, so the, Um, it allows us to integrate with Zoom a little better, so the idea is, uh, while the audio may not be perfect, uh, that we will uh, integrate and maintain the hybrid access so that. Uh, whether it's board members or applicants to the general public, they, I think the plan is to try to maintain that uh, continuity, so to speak.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, uh, so that, like I was already going away that week, that's school vacation week. Um, so could I call in then, so I didn't have to take an absence, cause that was what I was going to do, I was gonna zoom in from long distance?
Sorry, is this the April 20th you're talking about?
Yeah, that's school vacation week.
Yeah, yeah, so again, uh, again, we'll let you know, we'll confirm the email. I do wanna do a test run with the equipment, just to see how, how good or bad the audio and. Any other aspects of the layout of the room and so forth are, because it's a little bit different than we had previously done physically. Um, so, um. But yeah, other than that, we do expect you to be able to use the same panelist email, uh, or panelist link, uh, to connect. Uh, you could always join the general public, of course, and we can migrate you over. Um, and also the phone number that is uh, available for folks to call in on, so you could also use your phone if that was uh, easier for some reason.
Okay. Any other updates?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Eddie first.
So I was just gonna note real quick, uh, we had had discussions about the uh, MBTA guide, or the, the HCD, I should say, guidance for MBTA communities. Um, we're tentatively planning a April 13th meeting, uh, public meeting with the city council. Uh, it's a sort of a briefing required, uh, locally, so that the city council, uh, the, the chief elected, uh, officials are aware of. What the DHCD guidelines, uh, expect of Newburyport, for instance, uh, more, more particularly. Um, there is essentially is an expectation that we have more, um, as a right multifamily housing around the MBTA train station, uh, as elsewhere in the Commonwealth. Uh, where the MBTA has service, and so um, Rick and I have talked about this a little bit further, uh, along with Alden and. Um, what we're going to be doing is essentially a presentation overview of the context, so we have a good understanding generally of what, what is, is going on, what's expected. Um, what their ramifications are, whether we were to change zoning or not. Um, it really implicates whether or not we can get access to state grant funds, uh, so it's sort of a question, it's a policy level question of how far we wanna go with zoning changes to chase those funds. Um, and um, those guidelines are gonna change probably, uh, from the draft format we got now, so. Uh, the plan is to give an overview of, of what the state is expecting, have a little bit of discussion of, of how that might uh, impact Newburyport and then. Um, uh, wa- wait to hear, uh, in the coming months, what revised, I presume, guidance DHCD issues. And then from there have, uh, further discussions with the planning board and council about, um, what zoning changes may or may not be appropriate to adopt. Uh, in, in response to that new how, so-called housing choice legislation. So uh, that's it in a nutshell, but just to let you know that you might wanna put on your calendars the 13th of April as a um, a meeting to attend. Uh, to uh, to kind of see what's going on with that. Of course, we'll have a recording, obviously, but. Um, if you wanna take, just kind of get an idea of what's going on, because there will probably be further discussion, uh, in the months later on the year. Um, or even, even going into next year, uh, as to what kind of zoning changes may or may not be appropriate to do, uh, in response to that.
Are you saying that the planning board is not required to attend that meeting, but we can if we want to?
That's correct. Yeah, technically, the requirement that the state has given us is that the city council has to have a briefing, uh, in essence, and so. Um, certainly invite you to attend, but technically, it's only the council that has to have that, uh, briefing, so. Obviously, we expect other stakeholders to attend and I'll be able to confirm, uh, details for folks, but generally speaking, I just ask you to, uh, hold that date if you're interested in attending. Uh, otherwise, obviously, you know, Rick and I am sure will, uh, along with Alden, come back and, and give you kind of an overview, um, you know, for the board itself.
Okay. Anything else from anybody?
So Bonnie, I, I just wanted to point out that we kind of skipped over item 4A on the agenda, which is. Um, how we're gonna deal with changes in Colby Farm going forward, and it's gonna apply to both of them, so. I just wanna make sure that gets added to a, a future agenda, maybe before the 13-Doll Drive comes back to us. If we have a light agenda sometime, maybe we could just put that in there and, and have a discussion about how we're gonna deal with those modifications.
Yeah, Rick, uh, that's a great idea, Rick. I, my suggestion, I guess, would be that we just carry that on your agenda, if you're able to take it up on an April 6th, great, if not, uh, the 20th of April, but. Uh, it sounds like it'll, it sounds, uh, from our end, that it'll be a few weeks at least before the applicant's able to return because of the um. The closure of this loop actually requires the developer to take action and, um, resolve submissions with the conservation commission before that would be. Uh, maybe appropriate for this application to come for the commission and the planning board. Uh, for this one particular lot in that same development, so um, that being the case, it, it, it might be fine, I'll even hold off until the April 20th meeting, but. Um, we can just carry it around your agenda, and if you can cover it, great, if not, maybe we, we just hold off the next meeting.
Well, I'm just a little concerned that we talk about it. Um, in the abstract, if, if there's enough. Experience in the planning office with phone calls that the zoning administrator has gotten, that you can guide us through that. But that application was gonna be sort of the trigger to give us an example of the kinds of things that happen, so. Whether we do it in isolation from, or separate from that application. Uh, if we do, um, then we're gonna need some context for it.
Sure, yeah, I, I think we can certainly, even without necessarily a specific reference to that, that application, or I wouldn't really call it an application, but a request for modification. Um, we certainly could give you an overview, I think, of the issues involved and um, the type of questions that have come up where folks wanna do further changes. After initial approval of an OSRD plan, um, that might show a specific layouts, you know, uh, building footprints and then so forth, they wanna add a pool or a shed or additions. And we saw that a little bit with um, um, the, uh, Oleo Woods project, we saw with the Evergreen project, obviously, that was a bigger concern because of the, the water supply. Um, and that way you see it here with the Colby Farm development, where folks wanna do things after the initial plans have been approved. So um, so this is, uh, it's a common theme, I guess, we're hoping to have a, a clearer process going forward for how the board wants to handle some of these changes and what thresholds are appropriate for. Uh, reviewed by staff, by the board, or re-notice as a whole public hearing, uh, again, because it's a, an order of magnitude, maybe larger. Um, so we can certainly, I think, give you an overview of those things without necessarily needing that particular application. Um, although that certainly could be used for that purpose, but um, but I think it, to Rick's point, it might be helpful to have that discussion in advance of the night where. The applicant is looking for a specific approval to have your more global discussion in advance of that.
Well, if we don't get any more um, agenda items, the only thing we have on for the April, for the April 6th meeting is the joint public hearing on uses. And the business part, so you might wanna think about just um, bringing it up that night.
Yep. Yeah, again, that would be consistent with just carrying out your next agenda, so um, so if you're prepared to discuss it that night, we can, you know, give you a couple of visuals on the screen to walk through. Uh, the issuer issues that we're seeing and, and the types of things that people are requesting, which is comparable to what you'd be seeing in this 13-Doll Drive. Um, and um, and that way you'd be at least better prepared for um, the policy level question in general, so that we can coordinate a staff with you as a board, what you, how you wanna handle these things. Um, but also when that application or others like it come up, you'll be better prepared as a board to decide how you wanna handle that particular one.
Okay, we'll put it on for, thanks for bringing that up, Rick. That's a good catch. I was lumping those together and shouldn't. Okay, and anything else? All right, guess what? We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Alden, second.
Second.
Bob, got it. And I'll call Roll. Alden?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you all for hanging in there tonight. This was um. Good discussion, as usual. I'm always amazed at how we pull it off at this late hour, but we do it. Heather, go to bed. Anybody else is not doing anything?
Bastard, you think. Goodnight.
Hey, guys, good to see you. See you soon next week. Yeah, bye.
Hey.